September 19th meeting of the Skyboro Planning Board will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In the absence of Doreen tonight, Autumn is responsible for calling the roll. Autumn?
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Rick Meinke.
Here.
Roger Beal.
Here.
Jennifer Ladd.
Here.
Richard Dupree.
Here.
Chad Reed.
Here.
And Karen Shoup is absent. Next item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of August 29th. Before I call for a motion, are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, can I have a motion of approval?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Could you please call for the vote?
Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Rick Meinke.
Yes.
Roger Beal.
Yes.
Jen Ladd?
Yes.
Rick Dupree?
Yes.
And Chad Reed.
Chad is not a voting member tonight. The board is... All voting board members are present. Next item on the agenda, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on amendments to Chapter 405(c), Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. The proposed amendments relate to height requirements for non-conforming structures that are located in areas of special flood hazard. Eric?
Thank you. So this public hearing is concerning some proposed changes to the town's Shoreland Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 405(c). There's been a shortfall on the mandatory Shoreland zoning ordinance that has dealt with non-conforming structures within 75 feet of a resource. For those structures, they are limited in height to 20 feet, or the existing height of the structure, whichever is greater. If those are improved in any way that improve the market value by 50% or greater, then they would need... They are subject to a requirement to elevate structures. The ordinance never really took into account that requirement, so the height requirement remained the same even though with the expansion of those non-conforming structures, they would have needed to be elevated by three to five feet. So instead of making property owners either remove a level of their house or flatten roof lines, the legislature voted to allow such renovations and use measurements that take into account the additional three to five feet that would be required for those improvements. There's also language requiring applicants to submit photographs of the work before and after the project is completed. The town council held its first reading of the proposed amendments, I believe on the September 7th, about a week and a half ago, and referred it to the Planning Board for a hearing. So with that, I will turn it back to the board.
Thank you. Am I correct in assuming that this change really is at the behest of changes in the legislation?
That's correct.
So that would bring our ordinances into conformity with the legislation?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a comment? Now is the time. Please approach the podium. State your name and address. Autumn, is there anyone online?
Unfortunately unable to link into the meeting. Eric, do you see anyone?
I don't see anybody online raising their hand.
No. The public portion, public comment portion of this hearing is closed. I'll turn it over to anybody on the board who would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask this to a question to better understand this, because is the ordinance, Eric, limiting the height or allowing for...
So it would allow property owners, and this only applies to non-conforming structures within the 75 feet of the resource? That's protected under the Shoreland Zone? So for those properties that are non-conforming and expand beyond that 50% mark, they would then be able to be either over 20 feet or the previous height which they were prior to the expansion. So once they expand with the floodplain permitting requirements, they need to elevate above that, which is usually about a three to five foot elevation change. So it would allow over 20 feet for those particular properties that are renovated.
Okay.
But I think everything else in the Shoreland Zone has a height requirement of a maximum of 35 feet, so that stays unchanged.
Yeah, I knew that our height requirement is 35 feet. I think part of that's driven by a lot of truck, but I was trying to better understand. It appeared that we were allowing them to raise the height of their roof line, which I'm fine with. I thought that makes sense. I'm not 100% sure why we limited it in the first place, so I'm good. Thanks for helping with that.
Thank you. Hearing, nothing further. Eric, would you make sure that council is surprised of the discussion and the hearing? And the hearing is now closed. Something I wanted to do at the beginning, and I forgot to do that, and that's simply to remind folks that our next hearing is on a Tuesday. The October 10th is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and so therefore, our meeting or our hearing takes place the next day, on a Tuesday. Thank you. Item number six, AR Building requests a site plan review to establish 10 multifamily structures on a 57-acre parcel located at 35 Mussy Road, Assessors Map R38, Lot 1. Eric?
Thank you. So as Rachel mentioned, AR Building is looking for development of 120 multifamily units on a parcel at the intersection of Gorm and Mussy Roads. The project would include 10 three-story buildings and a one-story clubhouse with a mix of one- and two-bedroom market rate units. At its August 8th meeting, the board reviewed the site plan and off-site transportation improvements, and staff has been working with the AR Building team on those since then, which along with its main DEP permit are still being finalized. And with that, I will turn it back to the board.
Thank you, and for the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Mitchell, Vice President of Development at AR Building Company. Just want to thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to share our project. Online, we have Pam Abar with Dupree Engineering, and she can go ahead and pull up our site plan. And then I'm also here with Nikki Conant with Sabego Technics. She can talk about any traffic questions that you might have. So as Eric mentioned, over the last month or so, we have been going through the comments that staff has provided, and I think we have worked to address all of those with staff. Once Pam brings up the site plan, we can have Pam quickly take you through that. But really, our plan really hasn't changed much since we last met with you, so I'm happy to take you through the plan if that's helpful, or we can just address any questions that you might have.
Just hit the high points, if you would.
Sure thing, yeah.
Hi, good evening. This is Pam. I'm having a little bit of difficulty sharing my screen right now. I'm not sure what's going on.
See if I can allow you to share. Try that. And if you're having difficulty, just so you know, we've got a substitute for Doreen in the taking care of this.
Yeah, it's not allowing me to share my screen. Not sure. My apologies for that.
Are we just gonna bring up the plan sets?
Thank you.
How's that?
That's great, Eric. Thank you.
Yep.
So as you can see there, right there on the site plan, our project is located at the corner of Mussy and Gorm Roads. We are proposing 12... Sorry, 10, 12-unit buildings with a mix of one and two bedrooms. Some of the things that we've talked about with this board in the past is how do we kind of make it fit within that village feel with the TVC zoning? So some of the things that we've added through our conversations is multiple connections down to the streets from the buildings. The buildings are two-sided. They have an entrance-like feel both from the street, but also from the parking lots as well. The clubhouse there is centered at the corner, which includes not only our management office, but fitness room and clubhouse community room, as well as the pool. I think if you go to one of the other plans, you can also start to see that some of the landscaping that we put in and around the buildings, just to kind of really emphasize that that street view along Mussy and Gorm Road, but also kind of adding a bit of privacy to the clubhouse and pool, like we discussed with the board last time. Some of the other things that I think the board had comments about was the lighting. So since last meeting, we have fixed that to meet your standards. And then some of the remaining questions that we had out there from the planning report that we saw from Eric was that he asked a little bit about the timing of our off-site improvements. So we plan to do those ahead of the Downs project and to make sure that we're coordinating the timing of our pedestrian access, so it doesn't... So what we're building isn't ripped up by the Downs moving in the future, so we'll make sure that's coordinated, and we're planning on doing that next year. Some of the other questions was about the site plan elements, the dumpster area particularly. So we typically do that as a design build. It will be a mix of CMU block, brick, and fencing to make sure that it's enclosed. Another question that was in the staff report was about addressing. So I have worked with the town and come up with two names that hasn't been used anywhere else in the town. So we've established those. One is Nunshut River Lane, I believe, and the other one is Winter of Green Lane. The other question was about the off-site pedestrian improvements, and Nikki has worked with the town's consultants to kind of figure all of those out, and we've been working with them. If you have any specific questions about it, Nikki can certainly come up and kind of walk you through those. And then I think the other two questions were about our state approvals. So we do not have our DEP approvals quite yet, but we are addressing the DEP's last two comments, and we expect those very, very soon. And then the last other thing was to have Willsoe letters from the Water and Sewer Authority, and we do have those. And we will, of course, work with them to get a full permit before construction. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. This is an item that is available for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a comment? Anyone online with a hand raised? No?
One person, Madam Chair.
Alright.
Let me promote them. Alright, Denise, you should be able to speak.
Hi, Denise Hamilton, 167 Two-Ride Road. The applicant had mentioned that these units would be a mix of one and two bedrooms. Has it been indicated how many of each? Because I'm concerned as to if there's been any consideration how this could affect Eight Corners Elementary School, if there's any K through two children in those units, and the school being beyond capacity already. Thank you.
For the applicant, could you give us the numbers, please?
Yes, I certainly can. So we are proposing a 50-50 mix. So 60 units would be one bedroom, 60 units would be two bedrooms. And I can say from, you know, looking at our projects, we have a portfolio of over 9,000 units. Our projects don't typically attract families with school-age children. We don't have the playground facilities that usually brings in families. We have done a review of all of our properties, because we do get this question from the town many times, and what we found out of, you know, for every unit, there's maybe .03 students that would be in... Sorry, students of school age, school-age children that would be in one of our developments. So it's definitely not something we typically find. Most of our residents are, you know, either young professionals who either are not ready to own a home or don't want to own a home, and then the other kind of mix that we find in our residents is older people from the neighborhood who still want to live in the area, but don't necessarily want to live in the home anymore.
Thank you. Eric, do we have anyone else?
Not seeing anybody online.
Alright, thank you. In that case, hearing is closed, and I will turn this over to the board for questions. Let's start down at the end. Rick Meinke?
We've seen this many times now. I think this is the third time. And I think all my questions and my concerns that I had early on with the project have been adequately addressed, and I don't really have anything to add to the conversation here. I think they're meeting the ordinances as we request our applicants to, and therefore I just don't have any issue.
Thank you. Jen?
I do have a couple of questions. In the material that you submitted, you referred to, and our traffic peer reviewer picked up as well, some comments about the pedestrian analysis of the signal timing and the pedestrian phase as it was included or excluded from that. But I didn't see on any of the plans, and if I have missed this and someone could point it out to me, that would be great, but I didn't see anywhere on the plans where any infrastructure was shown as part of any of those signalized intersections. And so there's... So that's one thing. And then if that is because I don't have the individual improvements committed to memory yet, that our friends at the Downs are going to be doing in a lot of places, but if that infrastructure represents the pedestrian improvements at either of these signalized intersections, I think it would be really helpful for the plans to show that, even if they're grayed out and labeled as by others or something like that, just so that there is a more... A little more context to how this does fit into the neighborhood, as you spoke to before. But like, for example, the corner of Gorm and Mussy Road doesn't show any ramps or crosswalks at that intersection, and so I was just wondering if that was by design or not.
So we do have some diagrams of those off-site improvements that we're doing. Nikki, do you mind walking the board through that? Thanks. Eric, do you have those? Can you pull them up?
Sorry, I'm just copying them over to the council chambers material. Any particular diagram you want to see first?
Let's go to the first one at Gorm and Mussy. I'm Nikki Conant with Sabego Technics, by the way. And if you go down to the next sheet, yeah. So basically, there aren't pedestrian accommodations at the intersection currently, and the Downs is also not proposing to do any pedestrian accommodations. So everything that you see here is associated to our project. At all of the crossings, there should be landings with detectable warning fields and ramps. It is a little hard to tell at this scale, but there are pedestal poles with push buttons and pedestrian signal heads. In some instances, they're mounted to the existing drain poles. In other instances, there's actual new pedestal poles, but we'll work through all the final placement and conduit runs and all of that to make sure everything's ADA compliant and final design.
So is there a reason that those aren't on the site plans as well?
They can be, yeah. Yeah, this got submitted as a separate response to the traffic comments, but if the board would like to see this on the site plan, we're more than happy to coordinate that effort.
I think because we did have some comments earlier on, and we've sort of been talking about it a number of times, I just, I do think it helps to kind of round out the development and how you're fitting in with the rest of the the zone and the neighborhood, and I think it's great that these are being added, and it would be great to show up to tell the whole story in your plans. So thank you for pulling those up. The other question I have, there were also some comments about citing the sidewalk, particularly along Mussy Road, such that if a right-turn lane were to be added here, it wouldn't need to be disturbed, or there would be sufficient room for that, which I think is great, and it does look like you've done that. But I'm curious about why why, right at the corner, you're holding that so close, so close to the curb line and traveling? And I think it's great that in the, along the other frontages of the development, you're able to hold that back a little bit to provide both some esplanade and some buffer space to the roadways, but also for snow storage. And so I was just curious why at the, right at the corner, particularly if there's no ramp right there, why that's in that location and not held back a little bit further?
Yep. So originally, the intent was, and if, Eric, you scroll back up to the first sheet, that does show, I believe, the what the right-turn lane would look like. So there is existing curb around that corner, so the intent was to put the sidewalk at the curb line and not interfere significantly with their frontage, because the clubhouse is going there, and they're trying to put landscaping and make that more of a focal point, but we can definitely work through. If the board would prefer that be set back, like the rest of the sidewalk, I wouldn't think that would have significant grading impacts to what's been proposed.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it did. I don't think it's super steep right up there against the corner, but I think what you're showing elsewhere on the site is great, and it would be great to continue that around that corner if there's sufficient room.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I'm fine with staff working with applicant down the road for specifics on the dumpster enclosure, and I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Roger?
I'm basically satisfied with everything too, especially if you could address the comments my colleague has. I do have a question, though, a technical question for Eric on the land trust letter.
We'll talk about that. Is that specific to this?
Isn't it? Oh, it's not? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No. We will address that under correspondence.
Okay. I'm all set then.
Alright, thank you. Rick? Rick Duperry?
Yeah, I'm with the other Rick. We've seen this several times. I appreciate you just willing this to accommodate the changes that we've asked for. You guys did a great job, and I think it's a good development. So I have no questions.
Thank you. Chad?
Yeah, likewise, nothing further.
Alright, I have one addition, additional comment. Just as a reminder, we did receive communications under public opinion. We did receive communication from Dennis and Barbara Dorkerty concerning our approving this. They were very enthusiastic about the project. I'm basically with the rest of the folks here. I just want to note that I'm... This is the very first time that I can recall the addressing authority requiring a second address through a parking lot. I don't know why they did that. We usually get addresses of private lanes through apartment complexes. It kind of threw me that they wanted a second address in what is essentially a unified parking lot, and we've not done that before. That's up to them. I'm glad you've worked it out. It's just, for my way of thinking, is just a little strange. The... I'm gonna test the Planning Board here. We do not have yet a DEP permit, and there... I think that's the major stumbling block right now, and we cannot prove something, approve something without a DEP permit. Is it the consensus of the Planning Board that at the point at which they get a DEP permit, they can return to us as a consent item, assuming they've worked with the staff to iron out any additional information that's required? Okay, as soon as you have that permit, work with the staff. Make sure that you've dotted all your i's, crossed the t's, got everything completed, and you will go on the agenda as a consent item. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
Item number seven, Crossroads Holding LLC is requesting a subdivision amendment review for the Fifth Amendment subdivision of the Town Center Residential District to include a drainage easement and eight single-family homes on Lot 35. Property is further identified as Assessors Map U55, Lot 35. And now...
Oh, was that you, Drew?
It might have been. I'm out of Zoom now, I might, hopefully.
Alright, let me try saying something. Okay, I'm not hearing myself again, so that works. Eric?
Thank you. Yeah. So this project was previously before the board back in August. At its August 29th meeting, the board generally inquired about communal spaces and some lighting detailing. Staff has remaining comments on smaller items... Uh, staff has remaining comments on smaller items such as addressing and some fire lane striping uh, and has prepared a draft motion for the project for the board's consideration. And with that, I turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn it to the applicant.
Thank you. Drew Gagnon with Gorel Palmer, representing Crossroad Holdings LLC. Um, we're in front of you for the, I believe it's the August 29th planning board, so I'm going to be real brief with a summary here and just provide some plan updates and uh, looking forward to hopeful approval this evening for Lot 35 in Town Center Residential. Um, so overall plan, just to give a little bit of context here, uh, the dashed outline here is Lot 35. Front runnerways up in this location, pacer ways north of the site, and there's a private access drive that connects and provides access to this lot. Plan updates, um, as you can see, we're still proposing eight micro home units, same orientation, um, as well as 18 parking spaces, so like two per single family unit with two extra visitor spaces. Um, so a couple of plan updates that are shown on this screen that weren't in your package that went in for this meeting. Um, working with uh, town staff and fire department and the trash collecting vendor, um, we've actually increased the um, private access drive in this portion to 20 feet of paved width. Um, that gets us down to where the hammerhead turnaround is proposed for the fire truck as well as the trash vendor. Um, so we've removed or eliminated the reinforced turf and mountable curb on either side, making it easier for all parties to get down to that location. Um, another item that was not in your packet that's been revised since was the trailhead uh, location that enters the project down at the south. So working with the town engineer, we've actually provided the access to the side of the access drive. Um, even though there's no snow storage proposed at this location, we understand that plowing can sometimes push snow even where it's not delineated, and so just an effort for that, we've moved it to the side so that to ensure that there's no snow plow piles, um, prohibiting trail use in that location. Um, in addition, we provided three bollard lighting, which was included in your packet. Um, at each trailhead location in the sidewalk to the north of the site, as well as in the middle, um, to provide some lighting for residents of the project, as well as um, some guidance for the trailgoers that are going to be passing through the site. So key updates, um, comments that we've received to date. So as I mentioned, trash pickup's been reviewed and approved by the vendor. Um, so fire department access, we're providing a 20-foot clear width, not, none, no fire lane. Um, or re, or excuse me, no reinforced turf for the fire lane. This is all paved locations, um, per request, so we've made that revision. Um, private alley and drive width, so uh, this private alley that we're proposing is consistent or beyond what we've been doing in the Downs and in the town to date, and I'm going to skip down to the next slide here. I'll go back to the other updates. So what I have highlighted here in red are private alleys that we provide just in Town Center Residential uh, to date. Um, and I won't go through every single one of them, but essentially there's 20 foot, either 20 foot paved width or 16 foot paved width with reinforced turf, uh, Hayloff Lane here, Daisy Cutter by my mouse there. Um, Futurity Lane down here, there's an unnamed private access drive up the townhouses, as well as the one that was proved through the third amended Town Center Residential subdivision, which is essentially the access drive provided to this site. Um, this location on the right here is a blow up of right south of Hayloff Apartments, so right in this area, um, located right off of Daisy Cutter. Uh, and what I provided this for was it shows visitor parking spaces for single-family residents along here. Um, it's at essentially the same width and design that we're proposing tonight for the private access drive, so I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to that. Um, relative to the auto turn on the left is the fire, um, fire truck auto turn showing the complete movements, which we've worked out to at this point. On the right shows a 16-foot vehicle, passenger vehicle, which is our design vehicle for the site maneuvering the parking lot. Um, I know there was a request for the drive aisle, and I just want to point out that uh, while this isn't a formal parking lot drive aisle, we understand what, um, that the town has recommended that this become a waiver, um, reducing it from the typical 25 feet to 20 feet for our project. Um, so we are fine requesting that as a formal waiver. We just want to provide kind of the movements and show that the, the design vehicle for the site is, it's, it's meant to be tight, it's meant to be um, um, feel like a small residential, given the, given the size of the units that we're proposing here. So I just mentioned that, but we will formally request a waiver if it's required. Um, and I did mention previously the bollard lighting, as well as the trail signage has been provided, so in addition to the bollards at each end of the, where the trail connects in, uh, we're providing wayfinding signs that will work out the details with um, directing the trailgoers to north or south end of the site. Um, and in addition, I'll let Crossroads discuss this if they want to, uh, but the, they've made, they've scheduled a meeting with the Housing Alliance, um, per request from the board from the last meeting. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer questions. I'm looking forward to hopeful approval. Thank you.
Thank you. This is uh, subject to public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would care to comment? If so, please approach the podium. We have anyone online?
No one online.
All right, in that case, so as I can find my gavel, public comment is over. Turn this to the board and let's start down this way. Chad?
So the uh, shared or common building, um, can you review that one again? We've come off from the last meeting. What was there contained within that?
Uh, you're talking about the proposed storage sheds on site? Yes, so um, those are still located at the northern, there's one at the northern end and one down in kind of the middle of the site, and those are essentially, I think they're just a four by eight storage shed that's um, also proposes the trash pickup location, and we worked that out with the trash vendor to have these locations um, be picked up right there with them, so.
So it's secured and it's?
Correct, they'll have a door. Right, they'll have a door and they'll have, um, yeah, a lock, ability to lock and secure it.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you, Rick?
So, this is the, the fifth amendment, and it seems it is, um, and I the Miami, the, the drainage and all that stuff. But then the inclusion of eight, 525 square foot single-family homes. And as we understand, there is enough in the site plan process. So, two things, can you zoom out, show me? They're not highlighted on the plan graph, and I'm just trying to figure out, do you have another view or drawing that shows relative to like front runner and Hackmore?
Um, so yeah, I apologize, I don't have one that's further zoomed out than this, but um, front runaway is right, located right here. This is Scarborough Downs Road, so Tandem Court, which is constructed and occupied is right here. And then Pacer Way, which is constructed just up to my mouse right here, and actually this private alley is partially constructed too. So, uh, off the page here, Hackamore is basically above the screen in this location.
So. Sure. But. I find it a little bit. So when you do amendments, so this is on, like, pass out the, to make our life easier, if I like to use it, well, I feel like especially if I, if I can understand, but I'm, I like pictures of the bollards, you know, that lost the brand of that, I think, to be picked up with that law. But I'm looking at these two sets, and I don't know whether you've faced that one long ago, and I'm not exactly sure why they're exempt from the site plan process. On the floor, but.
Uh, Rick, could you look at C 101? And that, that gives you, I think, a better view of where they are in the, uh, in the development.
So.
And, and we had approved that lot when we approved, um, I believe at the same time we approved the cottages and the open space off of Pacer Way, pretty much at the same time.
So, yeah, I kind of got it now. So on the ver, on the very, on the first, second drawing in the set, it shows the empty lot. Then on C 101, it shows the buildings in the empty lot. Okay.
Yeah, and, and if you take a look at that, still on C 101, you can see the trailhead that goes down and connects to Grisville Lane.
Yep. So, I guess to better understand what you're asking for in this fifth amendment is to the inclusion of these eight family homes. So these weren't included in the first four subdivision plans, correct?
Correct.
And, and now we're including them on this one.
Correct. Correct.
Right. So, um. In the verbiage with, that you supplied, it said, we understand this is exempt from the site plan process. But aren't we in the middle of the site plan process here, or are we just saying that we're past the site plan process and now we're ready to approve this as an amendment?
So, can you? Single-family homes are exempt from the site plan review ordinance. Um, this one's sort of a tricky one. Um.
A single site, a single, single-family home, right? Not, I'm not a group, like, every group of, every group of buildings, every subdivision has to go through the site plan process, correct?
We don't differentiate in the site plan exemption if it's on its own lot or not, so it's a loophole, if you will. And so I believe that what they asked to see, in theory, this is a subdivision revision, these homes shouldn't be shown on this. They should really just be asking for the access easements that are going through as the streets. But they had asked, and I'm not sure of the complete history of this, but we had requested additional information to see how the homes were going to be cited on it. It is an um, a proposal to perhaps look at an amendment in our ordinance so that we clear this up. So if there's a condo regime that maybe has 100 of these on one lot, it is subject to site plan approval, but it is not the way it is written in our ordinance today. So it's a, it's a bit of a hybrid situation, and they've provided information so you can understand it better, but it's really not part of the subdivision.
All right, so now I, I, not just theirs, but if someone buys a single lot and they want to put 10 single-family homes on it, they don't have to go through a subdivision planning board?
That is correct, the way our ordinance is written today.
Oh, I'm gonna put some houses up tomorrow. I didn't know.
If your zoning is appropriate, it, it is a bit of a loophole.
We have, we have subdivisions in front of us every single night. So what you're saying to the, up the town of Scarborough on TV is that if you have a lot, you want to put 10 houses on your lot, you don't have to go through a subdivision? You don't have to go through a, you don't have to come to the planning board? You can just start building after you get to?
You still have to do your building permits, but this is the actual language. Um, the construction of or addition to single and two-family dwellings and their accessory building structures and areas for parking and vehicular or pedestrian use. Those are exempt from the site plan requirement, so single-family and two-family. And so, yes, to your point, those typically would be on an individual lot, and so you would see those in the subdivision. You would have a residential development with five, 10, 50 residential lots. And so we wouldn't see a site plan. This one is because of the unique zoning that is in place that allows them to put multiple homes on one lot. It is not um, specifically required to do a site plan.
So let me go back to the applicant. Is this like a trailer park in that these are houses that aren't going to own the land, they're just going to be little baby houses on one lot?
Uh, Dan, uh, since you've been heavily involved in Scarborough ordinances for many, many years, uh, could you please respond?
Sure. So we're going through subdivision, so we're not avoiding any review. Um, based on the submission requirements, we're also going through site plan, um, based on what we provided. So you have before you something that looks like a site plan because staff asked for it. Um, so we don't feel like we're avoiding any review. Um, but in terms of the character of these, and I think you weren't at the last meeting, we actually provided um, illustrations of the buildings, so for that background, um, these are 500, 525 square foot one-bedroom micro homes. They're, they're not trailers, they're um, they're pretty cool little uh, units that we think will, that fit the site well. Um, and we think kind of are, um, kind of respond to market demand for that type of unit. Um, and the trigger subdivision, and we're basically going through um, a site plan light right now. Um.
Okay. So these are single-family homes, they're just small ones, they're going to be on lots that are owned by the people who own the homes.
It's, it's a condo layout, so um, the people own or rent the individual building. Um, and there are common ele, common elements, so it's going to be common open space around them, they're going to have assigned parking, so it's, it's like a more like a condominium kind of layout, to give you a, an example. Um, though they are small units and the, the, the design is a bit different.
Okay. And you're obviously not circumventing the, well, the process doesn't exist, which is a crazy loophole. Which, if I can take advantage of it, I'm going to. So I that's a crazy loophole, but I appreciate you guys
Sure.
um, going through the process of actual doing a subdivision plan when apparently you don't have to. Um.
Same plan. Yeah, we have to go through subdivision.
All right, so now that I've taken up some time and you've explained that, I appreciate the, I appreciate the explanation on it. Excellent job. I don't have any questions in regards to this particular, or any, any issues with this, what you're doing in this particular, I just more had questions about the verbiage in the amendment request, I guess I'll say.
Yeah, the action, the board action.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, I don't, I don't have any concerns with what you're doing, other than the fact that I think that we have a we have an issue internally, um, that we probably need to address and resolve at some point. Thank you. I, I'm fine with this project.
Thank you. Roger?
Um, I'm basically satisfied with everything too, but I just wanted to get a clarification. Did I hear you mention um, three uh, bollards that were lighted bollards?
Yeah, we provided um, uh, three bollards that'll be lit or bollard lighting. Um, and this plan here shows it best. Roger, there's one um, at sort of the, the head of the, the driveway where the sidewalk from uh, the neighboring kind of pocket neighborhood ties in to the project, uh, one halfway down the access drive and one at the end. Um, those are really to provide some, some overall kind of low-level lighting, as well as delineate um, for both residents and also folks that are using the trails and kind of passing through the project to, to kind of stay on, stay on route.
Aren't those about three or four feet off the ground, you know, aren't those?
They are, yeah.
Is that going to be, do you think that's going to be enough?
We were hoping for this being kind of a, you know, fairly um, quiet, not over illuminated kind of neighborhood, so each unit's also going to have um, lighting um, by the, by the door for each, for each building. Um. So that was the intent.
All right, I'm all set.
Thank you. Jen?
Um. I don't really have any questions, um, but appreciate the clarification on the subdivision site plan process because um. While you were presenting, I was actually thinking, wow, this is quite a detailed division plan. Um, and had some comments that I thought maybe I'd save for site plan review and then realized, um, we're here. Um, and so I don't really have any comments, but definitely uh, appreciate your inclusion of the illuminated bollards and um, wayfinding signs, and I just want to reiterate um, and also appreciate the comparison here to the other uh, alleyways elsewhere um, on the Downs. That was, that's helpful to see both um, contextually and just sort of um, how this one differs a little bit, in my opinion, and so I think the, I just, I really hope I look forward to seeing, I really want to see this, look forward to seeing this. I thought the graphics that you presented last time were really um, intriguing, and I'm curious to see how it turns out and uh, check it out someday, but I think the wayfinding, particularly from the trail to the south, to the um, sidewalk and path up to the north, is really um, a really important link for this very small piece of the overall program, and I, I see it a little bit different than some of the alleyways that you compared it to um, elsewhere. in that most of those, I think, um, are sort of linking together other um, built out hardscape infrastructure, mostly, mostly sidewalks. Um, and this one, and not to say that people couldn't walk circuitously on sidewalks, but I think the presence of the trail here to the south and that that, if you go on that trail, as I recall, you're, it's very, um, what was, I think the term that you used is like organic or so, I just sort of picture it like a woods woodsy kind of trail, and then you would pop out into this little neighborhood. And um, again, I, you know, I think very highly of the, the overall thought that's gone into the very large picture trail network that you'll be building out as part of each of these little pieces and that, that little link, um, I just, I do just think is key. And so, um, you can do a lot with little wayfinding signs. I think that's great to hear. Um, and just making sure that anyone that maybe doesn't live in this neighborhood but wants to utilize that network, which is really kind of how I see this little piece as part of the, the overall network. Um, it's clear that it's a space that there, they could be in and know how to get out of it or onto the next piece of the network. So I think that's great. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Rick.
Yeah, um, it's gonna be quite a neat little project, I think. I, I just have a couple of question, obviously it's gonna relate to the bollards here. The color on those are gonna still be three thousand K. And there'll be no uplights. We'll have that dome on top of that bollard. Um, I'm just a little concerned about the darkness around those sheds. Um, for safety purposes, it might be, you know, you got a swing door there or something like that, and it potentially could be pretty dark. Even with porch lights on, um, especially that one in the middle there, that shed. Just wondering if maybe we could add a couple more uh, one by, one by each one of those sheds so that there's some light.
I think we could do that, or we could do a, a wall light with a, that's cut off.
Yep.
Um, we can look at that for sure.
Okay.
Can do either, Rick?
Yeah, I have no preference. Uh, you can work it out with staff, but I think, I think what we want to have is just the cut sheets of what those fixtures would be uh, for the record.
Yeah.
Uh, to be included in the packet. Uh, that's all I have. Oh, no, I had one other thing. Um, there's gonna be signage on that turnaround area. Right? Uh, because that's, you can't park there. There's gonna be a, some way in which nobody will be parking by that one shed. It looks like that's gonna be there.
Oh, yes, we're gonna have fire lanes signage and we're, we're gonna work with the fire department on some striping that um, also gets that message across.
Yeah, cuz you just don't want a car there when the fire truck has to get out of there.
Yep.
Or get in. Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of minor comments, I guess. Um, do you have any sense yet what that street is gonna be?
The name?
Yeah.
Um, we're considering simplicity, but we're not final on that. We need to work with the, with the police department to finalize that.
Okay, uh, and I appreciate the appearance of the bollards, uh, and also, uh, Rick noting that um, for safety reasons, additional bollards or a downlight would be very helpful. Um, I also want to express my appreciation. This, this lot came to us originally uh, with a discussion that there would be small, small homes on here, small houses. Uh, and uh, we expressed an interest, I believe, at that time of knowing more about it because it, like the pocket neighborhoods, uh, this became a unique, a neat, a unique feature that the Downs was was going to engage in. And I appreciate the uh, all of the additional information that you've given us. I think this um, this project holds uh, holds some real opportunity to be replicated elsewhere with small, relatively affordable housing. Um, that more and more of our folks can, can take a look at and could be the first step in, in permanent housing for some people. So appreciate what you've done here. Saying that, I have a draft motion which I'm going to read. I move to approve the project titled the Downs Town Center Residential Fifth Subdivision Amendment proposed by Crossroads Holdings LLC, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Goral Palmer dated nine two twenty-two with the following findings and conditions. Findings, the Fifth Amendment Plan establishes eight single family homes on Lot thirty-five off of Pacer Way. It also includes a minor easement adjustment for removal of drainage and access easement between lots forty-four and forty-five and creation of a separate drainage and access easement on Lot forty to convey town drainage to a private storm drain line. Waivers number one, section four D two, to reduce the minimum drive aisle width from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. Conditions, one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shell, A, establish striping for a fire lane between units three and four, as approved by the fire department. B, work with the town's E nine one one addressing officer to provide a name for the private way. C, provide a private drive signage and gateway plan. D, increase drive aisle width as discussed at the nine nineteen twenty-two planning board meeting. E, address comments in the Haley Ward memo dated nine thirteen twenty-two. F, pay the traffic impact fees, total two thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Iguas Parkway at U, US Route one, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Dunston Corners, fourteen hundred and two dollars. G, pay the recreation contribution fee, five hundred dollars per unit. H, provide final approvals by the Portland Water District and Scarborough Sanitary District. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Two, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. All plan modifications are to be completed prior to scheduling and pre-construction, to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Three, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit evidence in the form of a letter of plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities, or supervised the plan and facilities, construction and implementation. The letter of plan shall certify that the stormwater management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan and that they will function as intended by said plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roger Bealy.
Ra- Rachel.
Madam Chair, may I make a point of clarity, please?
Certainly.
The site plan that they showed tonight includes the twenty-foot uh, easement through the section there. And so I would like to make sure that we have the correct site plan versus the nine-two version. The one that they showed tonight is just a bit different.
Okay, so the amendment would be whatever the date of the plan is that you guys have shown. What's the date on that one?
Uh, I don't have a formal date, but we'll provide it. I mean, it can be today.
Nine nineteen.
Yes, nine nineteen.
Okay, amend that to the nine nineteen plan.
And the other thing, Rachel, I wanted to mention, I think I uh, um, I hadn't given you your most recent uh, copy.
Okay.
Um, so I was just uh, adding a condition, one I, uh, which we have language for right here.
When I revise plan sets as discussed at the nine nineteen twenty-two planning board meeting, including with respect to lighting. Is that, uh, Roger, you seconded it? Is that acceptable? Alright, in that case, we can go for a vote.
Madam Chair, I have one question.
Okay.
Sorry, it's not that I'm not gonna vote in a positive manner on this, but on the last one and on this one, I didn't realize until you were reading these. These are only one bedroom units, but on the last one that we did, the nice lady on the phone had a question about school, and I don't see the school impact fees on any of these, Erica. The school impact fees paid when the permits pulled?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So yeah, th- those are automatic, yeah.
But should they be mentioned on the, in the future? We, we can talk about that later. Um, but I think if we're gonna mention recreation fees and things like that, that maybe we should include the school impact fee so that the folks online and, and in the room know that everybody's, you know, paying their fair share for, for support of our schools.
I, I don't believe there's any waiver for school impact fees.
No, and to be clear, we included the recreation fees because of the letter that you all received. Because normally you wouldn't see that as well on a subdivision of this nature. You'd see that with building permits. So that was just uh, for clarity, when we discuss the letter later on in correspondence.
Okay, so if that, if that's the process and we don't include them on here, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, that I was understood from Eric that even apartments pay school impact fees, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I think we can take a vote now.
Alright. Roger Bealy?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
And Richard Dupree?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. That has passed.
Thank you.
Next item, item number eight, Crossroads Holdings LLC. Request a subdivision amendment review of the Sixth Amendment subdivision of the Town Center Residential District. The amendment would reduce the area of Lot forty-two and add small access and utility easements. The property is further identified as Assessor's Map R fifty-two, Lot four. Eric?
Thank you. So this one's pretty straightforward. Um, it would reduce the uh, size of Lot forty-two in the Town Center Residential District. Um, actually not too far from Lot thirty, excuse me, Lot thirty-five of uh, the last agenda item. Um, staff has been working with the Downs team and um, I apologize, I've heard this from Angela and she um, couldn't be here tonight, but I'll do my best to describe it um, to get some drainage easements uh, so that, and utility ac- access easements, so um, drainage can be correctly conveyed from the site. Um, and I think that is about the extent of the changes. And with that, I turn it back to the planning board.
Thank you. And for the developer.
Uh, thank you, Dan Bacon with Crossroads. Um, as Eric introduced, this is a a really straightforward amendment. Um, and it directly relates to your, to your next item, which is a site plan for uh, housing project. And um, we're essentially just kind of right sizing the lot um, from the old subdivision plan for uh, the program for Lot forty-two. And as Eric indicated, um, establishing both access drainage and utility easements on this lot to, to benefit this lot and also benefit additional development that would happen uh, next door, that will be tied into the site plan in the future. Um, and lastly, there's just kind of a, a minor detail. There's some grading easements on the perimeter of the lot um, to enable um, the, the proper grading of the lot and grading slightly off of the lot um, as the project's phased. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is an item that is open for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would care to comment? Is there anyone online?
No one online.
In that case, public comment is closed. And just throw this open to the board. Anyone cares to comment or question?
I looked it over and I have no comments or questions.
Alright, thank you. I'm seeing a bunch of heads waving, nope. Uh, I have no comment. So I have a draft motion. The Sixth Amendment amended Town Center Residential District subdivision subdivision review. I move to approve the project titled Sixth Amended Town Center Residential Subdivision proposed by Crossroads Holdings LLC, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Goral Palmer dated eight three twenty-two with the following findings and conditions. Findings, the proposal amends the existing Town Center Residential subdivision at the Downs by reducing the lot size of forty-two, of Lot forty-two and adding access and utility easements. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jen Ladd. Uh, call the roll, please.
Rick Dupree?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
Roger Bealy?
Yes.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Just as a reminder, we do try and take a break around eight thirty. We're moving pretty speedily so far. Uh, and we do not undertake any brand new um, applications after ten o'clock. Item number nine, Crossroads Holdings LLC, request a site plan review for Hackamore Place Apartments Two. The project would create three fifteen-unit apartment buildings in the Town Center Residential District of the Downs. The property is further identified as Assessor's Map R fifty-two, Lot four. Eric?
Thank you. As Rachel mentioned, uh, this project, Hackamore Two Apartments, would create three apartment buildings, fifteen units each. Um, the planning board was not able to get to this item at its last meeting on August twenty-ninth. Um, so the applicant has submitted its uh, staff, its response to staff comments for the board's review. Um, and with that, I will turn it back to the board.
Thank you. And for the applicant.
Well, thank you. Um, this plan I have up here identifies the site we're referring to. Um, so you just approved the subdivision amendment uh, for Lot forty-two. Um, we've added the, the development activity around this site. So Lot forty-two is highlighted here. Um, it's on the north side of Hackamore Avenue. Um, just to the south of the site across Hackamore Ave, it are the apartments that are currently under construction. Um, there's thirty-six units under construction to the south. Um, notably to the, to the west, which is the left on this plan, is the American House uh, at the Downs, the senior care facility. Um, actually in the process of starting site work, which is exciting, um, on the next week or so. Uh, that's just to, just to the west and then the remainder of Town Set, Cent, excuse me, Town Center Residential is, is uh, surrounding this site. In terms of kind of more detailed layout, um, so there's three buildings proposed. Um, they have, they're proposed to have fifteen units uh, per building. Um, they're configured to, in a way, kind of mirror the layout of the apartments across the street, but also have a, a a nice strong connection to both frontrunner, um, frontrunner way, which is on on the left here, um, as well as Hackamore Avenue that's um, below the units on the plan. There's two access points. One will be off of frontrunner um, to provide access really across from uh, the senior care facility. And then there's another access point proposed directly across from the apartments across the street on Hackamore Avenue. Um, this is the vicinity where there would be access easements. Um, these have been designed so that they can provide access to this project, but also in the future, as more planning occurs, um, these can provide internal driveway connections to, to development, just kind of to the north, um, up in this vicinity. So you'll see this driveway in particular coming off of frontrunner Avenue um, coming in, and then you would turn right, you know, to, to, to access parking for these units. Um, turn left to, to access, you know, future development there. In terms of other kind of details, there's a combination of mostly um, open air, uh, off-street parking, but also um, some garages that are designed with the tandem parking. It's been quite successful for the project on the eastern edge of, of the site plan. Um, I'll jump to the utilities, and if you have more details on those, Drew will jump up and explain them. Um, but the primary utilities to, to serve the project will come off of frontrunner. Um, and frontrunner has not been constructed yet, so that's good from a kind of connection standpoint. So we're not getting back into Hackamore Avenue uh, for, for utilities, which is um, at least binder paved at this point. So um, water, sewer, um, most of the utilities are coming off of, of frontrunner um, to provide services and to, to each of the buildings. And we've designed um, them in a way to also be able to serve future development to the north. Um, particularly for sewer. Drew can jump into those details if you want to hear about those. In terms of the landscape plan, um, this is the, the landscape plan. Uh, we've designed this and in a way, somewhat similar to the apartments across the street where there's a larger front lawn area. Um, between Hackamore Avenue and in the buildings. We also have a terrace area for um, outdoor sitting and activity for for residents. That's located right here at kind of the crossroads of the the sidewalk system. Um, there's robust plantings around the base of the building as well as uh, street trees um, around the lawn area and also along the perimeter of of the buildings by the parking lot. You'll see on this layout and also when we get into kind of the building architecture that uh, the first floor programming is a good bit different than um, other other apartments that have been done at the Downs where there's actually seven um, units on the first floor. And so four of those units are accessed directly from the exterior. So there's sidewalks to each of those uh, entry points into the first floor, really for kind of the end units in the building. And then there's three units that are accessed in the first floor from the common hallway. Then, of course, the upstairs units are accessed from a common hallway and stairway. Um, so we've designed that in a way to um, provide sort of more individual entrances and then outdoor patios for those four units on on each end of the buildings. Um, from the first meeting or submission to the to the follow-up, which we were able to do as Eric indicated, we've made some updates to the landscape plan, particularly around um, buffering the back of the garage um, towards future development to the east. We provided um, to provide good screening of the back of garage. We're providing a combination of a six-foot tall fence um, that alternates with a landscape buffer so that the rear wall of the garage won't be seen at all. Um, and provides a a good buffer to whatever happens on the area to the east. Um, because that back of the garage is actually only eight feet tall, you know, overall before you hit the um, the um, the eve. So uh, that will be entirely screened um, from the site to to the east. In terms of the building architecture, um, I've spoke a bit about the the floor plans and the unit layout. Um, but this is an image of of this fifteen-unit building. Um, as we kind of get closer to the town center and also to vary architecture and and to have a more kind of modern uh, modern look, we've gone with a flat roof building. Um, and that incorporates really kind of bay window elements. Um, the, if you can see here in in two locations on both sides, the front and the rear facade have these bays um, that provide additional living space for the upstairs units and a nice architectural feature. They're also the entryways for the first floor units that are direct access. Um, and we're pretty excited about this this building architecture, um, being different, being a bit more modern. Um, and some of the other um, key components to the architecture are, um, we have second floor balconies, um, but we've configured them in a way that they're kind of um, they're in towards the center of the building, really to accentuate kind of the end caps in the second and third floor. Um, these corner elements um, provide different kind of living space layout than some of the other apartments within the project. And um, we're kind of varying the the siding width and and material uh, between the first floor and the the upper stories. Um, so that's a sense for kind of the the aesthetics uh, of the building on the the exterior. This shows you um, just the 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 typical elevations. And I think with that, I'll I'll stop there and I'm pleased to answer questions uh, that the board may have.
Thank you. This uh, item is uh, subject to a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment? Eric, anyone online?
No.
Thank you. Hearing is over. Turn this over to the board. Who would like to start? Jen?
Um, just have a question. Um, the graphic on site distance there's a comment about a particular tree potentially limiting that.
Drew will speak to the site distance graphic.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Drew Gagnon with Goral Palmer. Um, so we worked it out with the peer traffic reviewer, um, because of the proximity next to the intersection, not providing the full two-hundred-foot site distance, but a little bit shorter, given what the vehicle speeds will actually be. Um, so there was a it's and it's always tough because of how fast it downs is moving. It was a planned, I'll call it, tree in this location, which just showed up as existing on our plans for chronologically reasons. Um, so what we did is we moved the existing tree south. So what we'll do is we'll update the previous sets to make sure that tree doesn't get put in that location so that it's not within the site triangle looking left. So that was the comment and that's what we addressed in the last submission.
Okay, so the um, got it. So the existing tree that doesn't maybe exist yet. Um, will you actually have in excess of one hundred and fifteen feet? By by making that change?
No, the tree was within the hundred and fifteen foot side distance. So that will get us to, if you were to look left, you'd have the full one hundred and fifteen foot. Um, previously, we've been kind of negotiating some trees being in that, just not a line of trees. And that was the request to move that one out. So that's what we did.
It was probably more uh, the time, the like sequence of those things that wasn't quite there.
Correct.
Um, that's fine. And I think uh, I agree with the other comments that the proximity there to a uh, stop control, I don't, I think that's fine. Um, but thanks for explaining tree. That's all I have.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Roger?
Are these um, are these units basically the same as a Hackamore One? Apartments?
The um, first floor uh, units and floor plan are um, entirely different. So the first floor has all uh, one-bedroom units and the units I think are smaller uh, than the one-bedroom units in Hackamore One that's across the street. The second and third floor units are two-bedroom units and they're, they're very similar to Hackamore. They're a little bit bigger because the building's a little bit bigger overall in order to provide the first floor layout that um, we're proposing.
Um, Hackamore One, is that the um, are those the units that were going to be sort of white with red trim or something?
Yeah.
Okay, your your red trim, I recall, right?
Their Hackamore is red siding and white trim. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the thing that uh, popped out to me though, when I looked at this initially was the garage, the garage and the um, the blank walls. I was kind of curious why, because on Hackamore One, you did put, I I believe there's windows in the in that garage out there. Along Hackamore One.
We did. Um, and there's been some concern about those windows in terms of lack of privacy in backyards. So we did that. Um, and we provided a landscape landscaping in addition to that. So not knowing the layout um, of development to the east, uh, we felt it was a better approach to provide privacy through screen walls. Um, nicely uh, designed kind of fencing and landscaping together. Um, which really doesn't enable you to see the the garage at all um, at that level.
And and that that screening and everything is going to be on that lot?
It's on this lot and we actually were able to better incorporate it on this lot than we did with Hackamore. Cause that with the Hackamore site, we had less space. Um, to provide it all within the the apartment site. We were like right on the property boundary, which became kind of a design challenge.
Okay, I guess um, I think that's all I have other than is it fair to assume that pace of way is just going to continue north?
Um, there'd be development in that area, whether it's, you know, a through road connection or or not, really depends on um, final layout wetlands. There's some wetlands in that area that we need to to be cognizant of in terms of our layout, so.
I think I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Who's next? Rick Meinke?
Yes, um, in staff comments, they mentioned about a double headlight on the north end. Is there a reason for th- that being a double when we don't know what's going on beyond that?
Yeah, we laid it out so that it creates the opportunity for parking, another parking bay there. Um, and showed it as a double. We likely would do is is try to install a single, but have that pole be, you know, you'd be able to add a head. And I'm not a lighting expert to know how easy that is, Rick. Um, but that was the intent, so that
So you're only going to install one head, though?
Yeah, I believe so. But true.
Yeah. Yeah, and just just to clarify, the the double head was more just a visual aspect to make sure that the pole is ordered with the additional knockout that we want for the second head to add in. Uh, there's only one head on it. It's proposed in the photometric plan that we're doing right now. It was just try to save, save that down the line. So we can add a note to clarify that to make sure it gets ordered that way and not too
Yeah, just make sure. Well, it's up to you, but as long as the only one goes up at this point. And then on page four of your your narrative here, it struck me and I'd like to just chat about it because I don't see any charging station allocations in this plan. But you say in your narrative, charging stations will be provided to service a number of electric vehicles in the parking lot. Parking stalls identified to accommodate charging stations are shown on the site plan. I didn't see them, but it may be because I can't see anymore. They say umpires can't see to begin with and I probably am worse than that. But what struck me here is it says, as designs move further into the Downs development and into the proposed town center, opportunities for EV parking are expected to become more common. I think that's kicking the can down the street because most of the charging on EVs are done when the car is at home or at their place of residence. So moving the chargers into the proposed town center seems counterintuitive to that statement. And I'd just like to see how you would address that.
Yeah, so there, in terms of what's proposed on this site, um, we have this on the utility plan, maybe it wasn't bold enough. Um, we have a, this area is dedicated for EV charging and they're on the plan, there's three different chargers shown. Um, I think it's six spaces and then
I did not look on the utility plan.
Yep. Um, and then we're providing for, you know, opportunities in the in the garage area as well.
So you're putting power into the garage?
Yeah, I think the intention with this site plan is to actually have a separate transformer for that area of the project. Um, we've run into trouble trying to manage some of these off of like one building's house meter and we're we're working through that. So that's the intention is to um, do that installation. And we've also been kind of doing conduit for future opportunities. We actually are meeting tomorrow um, with Revision Energy to talk more about some of the different charging opportunities in terms of um,
How the, how you can group them and they can actually charge your car faster and then when it gets near it it adds the power to another charger of that same, on that same pedestal?
Yep, among other things. So we're just kind of meeting with them specific to this. Um, because as you know, we're not experts and it's a very emerging kind of thing in terms of how that to incorporate. So but that's our, that's our um, intention here. I think the note about the future is it's also time, you know, more as time goes by.
I'm just missing opportunities in in our residential areas specifically. And and you know, I'm I've mentioned it more than once. Uh, so regardless of that, uh, I'm glad to hear you're you're working. Uh, are the ones that you've been in, are they networked or are they just off the meter?
The ones that we've done so far on the project have been off the meter and tied into, you know, one apartment building. They're um, yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, whoever whoever wants to go first. Tom Russell, if you need to.
Uh, certainly appreciate the effort with the uh, multiple bike pads and the covered bike uh, pavilion. And also the uh, potential gathering area for the terrace. Um, are there other amenities that are being offered here that I guess have been learned from previous developments?
There's, no, I mean, the focus is kind of that front lawn area, that front terrace area. Um, and the the covered bike shelters. I think those are kind of the primary exterior amenities. Um, yep.
And then the HVAC is all roof mounted?
Yes. Yeah.
That's all that I have.
Great.
Thank you. Rick Duperry?
I just have a couple of questions. I I like the layout and all that. Um, so the garage, how does the parking work, I guess? Um, cause you have seven, one bedrooms, eight, two bedrooms in each unit. So that's twenty-one and twenty-four. So that's forty-five total bedrooms, right? So how how did you calculate the parking? Did you do it off our our um, code requirement kind of book? Or did you just figure this is the boat, the right park?
We did. Um, and also, you know, off of um, past lessons learned and kind of what main properties recommends, the property management company in terms of parking. Um, the garages, you know, are for, you pay an extra fee to have a garage space and you also have the space in front of the garage. Third tandem.
Okay.
Um, parked, so you would, um, the same unit renter would would have both of those spaces.
Okay. And they're not assigned spaces out front? They're just where we park wherever?
They are assigned within off-street. And then there's on-street parking that is
Okay.
guest parking, kind of overflow, et cetera. And those are unassigned because that's, they're within the public or what will be the public street right away.
So the parking in the parking spaces are assigned to s- particular units?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I guess I was just kind of leading to where Rick was a minute ago in that you have the six spaces for charging. And then, you know, you may have some charging in the garage as well. Um, I'm not, you know, we don't have any zoning ordinance that requires charging and then I don't think I think right now it's, it would be a little bit hard to come up with one based on there's a lot of variables, but you might want to think about, like you said, if you were putting conduit in the ground for provisions for charging later, that's probably a good idea. I mean, obviously, we can't tell you to do that. It's really, would be better than digging up your plants later on, I would think, but that's really up to you. Um, because I'm not sure. I think the six that you have today are fine. But five years from now, you might find that a third of these, these are these are apartments, right? They're not for sale. There's not condos.
They're apartments.
They're
They're rental. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're rental units, but they're in a very nice area and I'm sure they're going to be very nice apartments. So you're probably going to have younger folks there that are, not that us old folks don't drive EVs, but um, you might have younger people there and you might find that a third of them or half of them have EVs and this is main, so nobody wants to park a mile from their house to charge their car and then and then walk back to their apartment. So just a thought, if you put conduit in the ground now, while you're putting the other while you're putting in the conduit for the utilities, it probably makes sense. Um, I didn't see any, I'm not going to say what I didn't see because I probably looked right at, but I guess I didn't see any elevations in this particular package, but I think you supplied those
Yeah.
the last time. I know I've seen them and everything that you've done out there looks great. So I guess I don't need to say them. That's all I have. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. Um, I've got a few things. Um, first of all, a a comment about the architecture. Uh, you're right that it is moving much more to to the modern. Uh, our design standards call for a New England vernacular. Um, I think, I I suspect more and more the New England vernacular is moving towards a a more modern interpretation of some of the old styles. Uh, and I think um, this building, these buildings are are in the line of a new, a a newer New England vernacular. Uh, I was really intrigued by the way you have um, A newer New England vernacular. Uh, I was really intrigued by the way you have um the outside. Some of the apartments available through the outside, um, as though they are much more somebody's home than an apartment. Uh, with that separate entrance. I do have a bit of a problem with the um. The palette that you've chosen. While you have a lot of variation. In the facade. That darker palette. Tends to blend the variation. So that it's less obvious. Um. And the effect of that color. Uh, is a very heavy building, a very heavy and bulky building. Do you have a variation in the color? It's tough to see from these.
Yeah, the. The bay is intended to be um a different shade. So these. Elements here, these bay windows don't show up great in what you see here. Um. The intention is it to be kind of along the same kind of color palette as you as you can tell, but. Um, have some distinction in terms of shades so that they. Stand out a little bit more. Um, and. Or obviously kind of visually, you're drawn to it as an entrance and also um as an architectural feature. And uh, the other intention is to. And I'm not an architect, so I'm playing one right now, but in terms of. Uh, the the siding material um is to really kind of accentuate the first floor, having a wider board. Um, having. This band really. Uh, separate the first floor from the upper stories. Um, and that.
Is there a difference in color between the first floor and the upper stories or is it just the uh material that's used?
Right now, it's not a different color. It's the same color as it's more relying on shadow lines and then more. Different shade on those bays. Um. The windows are going to be a different color than they'll be a different color than the um. Trim and the siding material too.
I I I guess I would. Urge you to take a look at possibly a little more variation in the in the tone, in the color. Uh, a little lighter in some areas. It it. From from these designs, from what we can see, it still looks heavy and I can't. I. I can see how it could mass rather than uh provide an interest. So so that looking at the bays. I don't see that they're different other than. In in terms of the color. So I'd ask you to to take a really to take a look at that to lighten the effect of the. Of the massing of the building. These are larger buildings than we've had because they 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 have more apartments to them, do they not?
They're. A couple of feet longer. Um, they're not, I don't think you could, you would tell. Dimensionally that they're bigger. I think they're a few feet longer, uh, a few feet wider. Um.
The dark color tends to emphasize bulk. That's that's I I guess my uh. My comment on that and in my request that you that you just take a look at it and see if there's a possibility of more variation there. Um, the. Fencing and the landscaping in back of the garage, is that, uh, does that appear in any of our? In in any of the material you sent? I don't recall seeing it.
It's on the landscape plan. Um.
But but it doesn't tell, it really isn't effective. For me to see how, when when you say it really um. It really buffers the garage up to the last two feet. Without really seeing how that works. That's not helpful to me. Uh, to help to make a decision as to whether that works or whether we need to see the windows. So I would appreciate being able to get an artist's view of the fence, which is made composed of what?
It would be a wood fence. Um, and it the intention is that sixteen feet long and it's six feet tall. And then between the fence sections, there would be. Um. Uncomparable uh distance of landscaping so that there's a pattern that's created. Um, and. The bit, the wall itself is only eight feet, six inches tall, so you wouldn't see them. You wouldn't see it near the building.
Okay, when you say it's a wood fence, is that a stockade fence? Is that a what kind of fence?
I thought it was in our package, but it.
If you if you could, I'd appreciate if you could point that out to me if it is in the package.
I just put it up on the screen and shows the. Construction style of it.
So that's solid?
It's.
Or slatted?
It's slatted.
With space in between?
Slatted, yeah. Yeah.
And the plantings in between? How does it look? Against the against the garage?
Landings I don't have in they're shown here. So on the landscaping plan. So what you just looked at are the fence sections. Um, which are shown here. And then there's. Evergreens in between each uh fence section. And then you'd have another fence section. And there's one, two, three, four, five sections of fence and then four. Uh, segments of of plantings in between. I think it looks like the plantings are only. You know, a six-foot gap um with plantings that would with three tree, three shrubs that would fill the space.
Is it all mulched in back or is it turf?
Behind the garage will be between the fence and the garage would be. Uh, crushed stone um for drip edge and then on the other side of that would be. Basically, the property line, you know, it'd be grassed into whatever occurs to the to the east of the site.
So the fence is right on the property line?
No, it's three. Three to four feet.
What's in between the fence and the property line?
Um, for now, it would be grading because we don't, we don't have a plan yet for uh what is to the left. So it would be a slope until. That area is is designed and kind of basically matches in. To to the the grading on this site. We don't have programming for for that area yet.
So water drips down, water runs down. Does that runoff there? If. If you've got the runoff, you've got the drip line.
There's a drip line and there's an underdrain that takes the 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 stormwater and I believe it ties.
And then the if on the other side of the fence, if you have nothing planned. Except some grading, what's to prevent that from eroding?
So we actually have a gutter along the backside of that building to collect the runoff into a small roof drain. System, if you will, and to get it to the location that we need to get it to, which is at the. Southern Drive. So what Dan was mentioning is it can be a crushed stone strip just from a construction strip off the back of a building. Up into the fence. And the tree buffer beyond that. So in between the tree buffer and the property line, we're gonna stabilize that vegetation. So it's gonna be grass.
Okay, that's that and that's what I needed to know.
And then we'll match the grade with the future development as well. Um, and beyond that, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen from the next development, but it'll be grass and vegetated until then.
Okay. Um, you've asked essentially for a waiver for um. To have. One of the street. Uh, one of the street parking areas. Uh, parking. Is is part of your uh. Parking for the whole apartment complex. Correct? You want one of the one of the street. Lots, not lots, but one of the street slots to be.
One of uh on-street parking towards our our calculation. Yeah.
Um, I know we've had problems in a sense with that in the past because. Once that area becomes part of the town, becomes a town street, um. Our. Our folks need the cars off the street in any snow emergency. Where would a car go if it was parked there?
So our property managers have a system for. When snow is removed out of the individual apartment sites to locate elsewhere. Um, so it'd be handled in a similar way um to to that.
Which is?
It varies by site. Um, so there's. And I don't know all of the mechanics of of where the different cars go, but they they that's how they handle snow removal um right now onsite is. If the streets plowed, then there's some cars that go on the street. If there's other locations that are more commercial in nature, um. Cars are located there for for plowing purposes. So that'll be handled in the same way.
Well, that that doesn't exactly respond to. What I asked, and that is you have a car parked there and and it's parked there because uh. All of the rest of the lots in the uh slots in the building are taken care of. There are already cars there and there's snow. And that resident has to move his car. Because it has to be off the street. And you're saying that there's somebody who's gonna come along and tell them where to move?
Yeah, the. The. Property manager does that today with. Apartments within our project. Um, Mill Village, the the first phase, uh, the white buildings on your way up the Downs Road have the same situation where there's certain. Number of spaces that are provided on-street. Uh, the planning board approved. Approved of that at the time. Um, and there's a system for notifying residents on. When snow removal is occurring and and having the cars relocated. So that's how it's handled today. I. I don't. Run that department, so I can't give you all the details about how that occurs.
Here's here's my concern is we get closer and closer to the town center, um, more and more these on-street. Parking areas are going to be used by visitors to the various events in the town center. Uh, and. That means it's going to get tougher and tougher for residents or visitors to find spaces. Is there any other place on? Within the lot that that extra slot can go? That extra parking space can go?
Guess we can look at it. Um, certainly. Um. I think one of the challenges we have, not challenges, but opportunities we have is to. Not continue to just rely on off-street parking. We have a lot of on-street parking that we have in front of these sites um that I think actually will be. Underutilized because we're maybe relying too heavily on off-street parking. So it. Um, we want to be using. On and off-street parking, especially as we get into the town center and not just have off-street parking because it. Leads to maybe building more parking than you need. Um.
Well, this is this is one slot. Um, so I appreciate it if you see if you can find that slot on there since it's a. Specific waiver that you've asked for. Um. Let me also indicate that I'm kind of with Rick here in terms of 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 EV spaces. I I do think. Uh, we need to look to the future. Um, I appreciate your. Putting the conduits in all of the the garages. Um. If you don't have six EV. Cars in there, you are then going to be having. People who don't have EVs parking in the EV area because that's the way it's been set up. In other words. Instead of seeing an EV charging station as an. As an extra place for anybody to to pull up and know that only EV cars are going to be there charging. Um, you're counting upon those also to be part of the regular parking. Uh, so in effect, that's putting a crunch on people's ability to use those charging stations. If we end up with or if you end up with um the number of cars that the calculations indicate that you might end up with. So I I think um. Do you have any questions of us? And what you need to bring for the next time?
So it sounds like looking at. Colors of the building um and any updates we could make to that. Um. And looking at adding additional parking space and fine tuning our approach to EV charging. Those are the. Eliminating the um. Double-headed lighting. Um. Is that what? The board's interested in? Anything I'm missing there?
I well, and that's what I'm gonna ask. Is that uh? Is there anything else the board would like to see when it comes back, when this comes back? Have we, Eric, have we pretty much?
Yeah, I think so.
Covered what you mean. Okay.
I guess from um. Just to kind of. Put some things on the site plan that we've talked about tonight. Um, I think showing the the fence on the actual site plan itself instead of just on the landscaping plan would help.
True.
Um, and then Rachel, I'm not sure if um seeing renderings of the. The fence.
Yeah, I would I would like to see the renderings of the fence and landscaping from a street a street-side view. I mean, basically from ground level. If it's if it works, if it appears that those going to provide appropriate screening, then to my way of thinking. Uh, then I would be comfortable with that. If it doesn't look as though it's going to do it. Then we're gonna have to go back and take a look at what the ordinance actually calls for, which would be the windows.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, there's also landscaping along the the street too that'll help with that. So we can show that to you. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Roger?
Yeah, just um question for Dan. Uh, don't you have another um complex? Either condos or apartments that have a dark color similar to this to the shade?
Yeah, the color. The siding material and the windows are the same at tandem court. Um, the first condo is coming into town center residential. Um, that's the same. Siding material that we're proposing.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a good example.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a slightly different architecture. Um. And slightly smaller buildings.
Yeah, but it's a it's a shade.
Very similar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and Neil, I was I was just thinking about this when you're discussing the uh off the uh on-street parking. I mean, there's a lot of density with units. Already developed over there. I are you guys given any consideration to? Uh, whenever you have a small extra space of land. Of just making like a community parking lot to accommodate any overflow? Are you finding any, are you running in into any trouble so far with too many vehicles? You know, people coming to visit and things like that?
Um. We're not struggling with that other than Chris, Chris. No, I'm just thinking of all the phases. So Grissmill was the. The single-family neighborhood, Grissmill. Um. Had somewhat of of a problem with that kind of early on because there they don't have any on-street parking at all. Um. And so that's the area of the project that we kind of lessons learned, for example. And then with the town center residential phase, the those single family because they have on-street parking in front. Um, that. That serves well as kind of guest parking. Um. And but in terms of programs like this, um, we're not running into issues with. With parking like the Gables is a good example on the Downs Road tandem court. Um, both of those. Have off-street parking and then they also have the on-street parking and. Um, there's plenty of on-street spaces open so far and that's our. Our thinking is that having some uh a modest amount of parking for the project on-street. Um, is appropriate in this context and then also having. Plenty of additional spaces for guests. That's that was our thinking with this particular site. Um.
Sorry, not to cut you off here, Dan, but I do want to mention too regarding the on-street versus onsite parking spaces is. You know, one of the overall goals of the Downs and the development is to 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 reduce impervious area. And specifically what that does is is it reduces salt, it reduces sand that's produced and put onto the ground that eventually goes into the streams that we're. Working to protect. So if we. Utilize on-street parking more, it significantly significantly reduces the amount of impervious area because you don't have to create additional dry aisles, right? So you reduce that twelve, twenty-four feet, if you will, of a dry valley. You need this sand and salt. If you're able to utilize a road that's already there. So that's kind of one of the goals that we've been working on is just. Overall, less impervious from thermal impacts into the natural resources, but as well as just from salt and sand and all that. So. Uh, that's just one of the goals we've been looking at. We saw this as an opportunity for on-street parking and. Trying to balance that, understanding the, you know, the goal of trying to make sure everyone parks onsite, but as well as. You know, reducing impervious area.
Drew, I I agree that that's a little difficult to balance and that's why. I brought it up because I think it's going to get harder and harder to balance the more we get into the. The center of the Downs uh and to start to think about that now. Um, I think I've. Tend to think about on-street parking as. In a sense, additional. In other words, that the residents are taken care of. Um, by the appropriate number of parking spaces uh assigned to them or within. or within the within the development. And then what is on-street are the visitors, the guests, the door dashed person who's going to, you know, run up with some with some food, fast delivery sort of things, places for people to park. If those areas are taken over by the residents, because they don't have enough parking within the development, then the visitors are going to go elsewhere and the delivery folks are going to go elsewhere. We're going to see a different sort of traffic. So I think that's that's the balance we have to take a look at. And I think one spot, one additional spot inside that development is not going to significantly impact the amount of salt used. Thank you. And we'll see you again. All right, let's this is convenient time, let's take a five-minute break and use that clock to decide what five minutes is. Thank you.
In August, this was the design that was presented to the board at that time. Shortly after that meeting, we went and we met with the fire department. And what the fire department was looking for was a 20-foot clear width for access into the site. We then resubmitted the plan set, which included a revised design, which is what's shown up here. And we added this concrete apron, which is a concrete apron that was sitting about two inches higher than the grade in the paved area. But what the planning staff thought this would allow for left-hand turns into the site. So we all scratched our heads a little bit more. And Evergreen continued to both work with mobile and the diner people. And just last week, we were able to to get in touch with mobile. And we're still in the process of coordinating this emergency access into the strike into the site from the mobile gas station. So what would be proposed at this location would be a 20-foot access aisle directly from approximately this area. That is something that still needs to be negotiated with mobile a little bit. So we've shared this this drawing with them today. We would have a 24-foot wide swing gate here with a Knox box for fire access. So this would be for emergency access only. This entry here would go back to a design that would be very similar to what you originally looked at. But we would remove this concrete apron here and put vertical granite curb at the location on both sides of that right-in, right-out access. So that's where we're at. Evergreen Credit Union is still working with mobile to finalize this plan. Once this location is finalized, we'll go ahead and and redesign the site as needed to 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 show this. And there's some minor storm drainage that's also affected with this location here. The other site, the other site comments were relatively minor. There are still some remaining stormwater changes that may be needed. One of one of the comments was to verify that there was an actual outlet pipe to that catch basin within Route 1. The town has since gone and cleaned that catch basin. So now that the outlet pipe is fully exposed and it appeared to be in good condition, but I believe in working with town staff, we will further explore that. So we'll further explore this storm drainage network here to show that it has the capacity to take that storm water from this site. So Saba Technics will plan on working with the town engineer and planning staff on that as well as revising this right-in, right-out to better meet the town comments and also understand that there needs to be fire access into the site. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. This is an item that is available for public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment? Anyone online, Eric?
Seeing no one online, Madam Chair.
All right, seeing no one online, public comment period is over. It goes to the board. This one. Does anybody have a comment? Jen?
Thank you for showing this revised graphic because I really thought it was my insight was bad because I couldn't find the connection to the budding property. So I I certainly that's terrific from a an emergency access standpoint. And I think the obviously we have to accommodate that, but the trade-off to the what the way that you will be able to narrow the entrance here on Route 1, I think is good. So I think that's great to hear. I'm the first question that comes to my mind when I see this graphic is is you know, what potential exists for that to be a more formalized access point instead of just for emergency access? And it's it's you know, we have a lot of access management issues actually everywhere on Route 1. And in particular, around the Dunston corner intersection itself. And so I'm just, I don't, you know, maybe not. We don't need all the details in terms of conversations or like agreements that were had with the Butters. But I'm just curious about the functionality of that that access point there. And and also something similar to the south, you're not showing that here. But I'm wondering if there is the potential for that in the future. And if not with the current owner, you know, we I always think of like our work here, you're you're coming to us with Evergreen Credit Union and your Butters are mobile and whoever's owning diner right now. But, you know, we have to think about these lots as being owned by anybody down the road. And so I just, you know, we've also on the transportation committee in town. And I know we've talked a lot about access management challenges in other parts of town. And one thing that we always say is like, oh, we wish that this just had a connection to the property next door. And and I I'm bringing this up fully recognizing that that is an agreement between two private entities and not not the responsibility of the town or or probably even the purview of this board. But just in terms of overall functionality and safety and access of how people are going to get in and out of the site. That's that's those are questions that jumped out at me immediately. That's my first thought.
So the intent would be that this this swing gate would remain closed at all times, except for emergency purposes, which the fire department would have access to that Knox box. So we understand that this intersection here at the mobile gas, this is not ideal. So if there were any changes that would be proposed for more of a formal access, we would, of course, have to come back in front of the board for that. So at this time, we're really looking at this for emergency purposes only. The revised site plans did show in the southwest corner, kind of a potential connection to that private drive. It wasn't designed, there might, there would be other changes that would be needed as part of that. And again, we would have to come back in front of the planning board for any changes relative to connection to the diner drive.
Sure. Great. Another question is how I'm so confused on how people coming from the south will access this property?
It's it's not ideal by any means and and the customers going to Evergreen are just going to have to get used to the the traffic to get to the site.
Sure. So understood. Do we, I don't know the stop hand, do we allow or disallow U-turns at Dunston intersection?
I believe they're not allowed, but I'd have to look into that more.
I would hope I would hope so, but anyway, my 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 sense is that that will, that is what people will probably do. Right. And so my question is, are we peeing that up here by doing that? Because if someone were to not like just logistically, how are they going to get there? If you're coming from the south, you're either going to take an illegal U-turn at the intersection or maybe you're looping through someone else's parking lot or you're looping around on broad turn and cutting through mobile and coming back out. I I'm just it's, yeah, yeah, it's just something, you know. It's just a question I have and I realize it doesn't have a good answer because we're also not, you know, wanting a full access driveway here. But that might be something that maybe some onsite wayfinding signs or something like that could potentially help alleviate. And I'm sure as customers, patron, you know, people who are coming here frequently will craft their own ways of getting there. We just hope that they're doing it. I'm not sure what tools we have to make sure that that's happening in a really safe way. I think those were the those were the big ones that I hear or questions that I had. And just again, I realized that negotiating with property owners on access like this doesn't always work out. And so I'm happy that in this case it has even in a limited way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next, who wants to go next? Roger?
I I hate to bring this whole thing up again too, because we rehash the whole dilemma. But I'm just kind of curious on on Route 1, right at that right in front of where your entrance is going to be. I don't recall, is that just concrete divider there or it's not raised that much, is it?
There's there's nothing. It's it's striped and it starts to basically taper off at that at that point.
So theoretically, anybody heading north and wanting to go into the service station could just take a left right there.
Yes.
Theoretically.
Yeah. And they do probably.
Probably.
Okay. See, that's the problem I have with the whole thing is a lack of consistency. I I just think there's a fairness thing. It's screwed up, but it's still it's 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 not fair, you know? The other thing you mentioned is you, are you still talking to the diner people?
Yes and no. There were a lot of conversations at the very onset of this project and those have have kind of gone away since then. Right now, this is our focus.
Sure.
But in the future, you know, this may come up again because of the potential opportunity for that connection. So once Evergreen's in there and if they find that it's not working, that may come up again.
Well, I won't blow on this anymore. I mean, I just I just feel bad for you guys.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, sure. I'd like to go next. So we've been through this project a few times.
So we've been through this project a few times, and we tend to do this, we go through projects, and we leave them, they leave here with one task, and this task was to talk to Mobile about the emergency entrance for the most part, and then when we come back, when they come back, we give them 100 more questions about, could we do this, or can you do that, or put another pine tree over there, and I think that that is not beneficial to the applicant or to anybody really. It was my understanding from my reading of the codes for the town that we want to limit access to sites for safety purposes. So to have an access in from the mobile station would not be considered a good thing, nor would it really be considered to have any more than that one access. That's why we have the rule that they have to have a left, you know, right in, left out, whatever. I'm sorry, right in and right out, but to ask this applicant at this point to start exploring whether or not we can have more access points to the site isn't really fair. And contrary to our codes and standards for the town, so we purposely limit access for safety reasons and for traffic control. So I'm not exactly sure why. We do have a draft motion. Having a lock gate there is the only thing that makes sense to me. I think if you talk to Public Safety, they would tell you the same thing. And yes, people are going to turn left in there. There's Whole Foods, there's sites up and down Route 1 that have the same configuration because that's what we tell them they need to do. And then we wonder how people are going to get in there going north. They're going to get in there the same way they get in everywhere else. Up Route 1, there is a spot where you can make a, if I recall, by the marsh, there's a spot where you can reverse direction. I wish I had Google Maps up, but I think there's a spot where the Public Safety people sometimes sit, and there's a pumping station, and I think that there may be a reverse direction thing there, but I'm not sure. But yeah, if people are coming, going north, and they see the credit union, and they want to turn in there, they are most likely going to turn into another parking lot and come back around and turn in, and that's the way it's always, that's, there's nothing we're ever going to do about that. As long as they don't make a U-turn on Route 1, I don't think they're doing anything illegal. So that's all I have. I think it's a good project. I think it's not a great spot for it, but that's not a great spot for anything. So, I mean, how often do we go to the credit union? I'm sure there are business people that go every day. I think most of us go, you know, once every couple of weeks, but I'm sure I can find a way to get into that parking lot and get out safely with that one access point. I think driving through the restaurant parking lot or cutting through the mobile, someone would just get killed. So I'm in favor of the one access point. As we've discussed, and I already took up as much time as everybody else, so on a subject that I shouldn't have taken two minutes on, other than to say it's good the way it is, we should have proven.
Thank you, Rick. Chad?
Again, we've seen this a couple of times already, so I think we've pretty much explored all the pieces, and appreciate your efforts with the negotiations here, but other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Rick Meinke?
I'll just say that you managed to put lipstick on a pig and got it good. Thank you. I think that's the way to go about it.
Thank you. I second Rick's comment. Not quite as colorfully, I guess, but I, just a bit of reflection, and that is in terms of how we try to set up accesses and access systems so that people are safe. We can only do as much as is possible. People who want to make a U-turn on Route 1 are going to make a U-turn, and even if there was a giant sign that said no U-turns, people would, there's somebody who would make a U-turn. We cannot stop people from being foolish and not driving appropriately and not following the signs appropriately. I think you've done a very good job here getting that emergency access. I do think now that that's there, that a couple of things to do would be to say no parking in that drive area, because otherwise people will say, oh, good, here's a couple of parking spaces I can pull into. And perhaps no entry. Just to make sure that it's very clear from people who are already in the credit union that that's not an exit. That's not the way they're going to go north. So that sort of signage, I think, would be helpful. I think you have done really great work in getting that done. Saying that, I have a draft motion. I move to approve the project titled Evergreen Credit Union, proposed by Evergreen Credit Union as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sabeo Technics dated 8/15/22 with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The proposal would involve construction of a 3,156 square foot credit union with associated parking and three drive-through lanes. The proposal would also involve demolition of an existing two-story building, eliminate the existing curb cut, and create a new right-in, right-out entrance to and from Route 1. Conditions: 1. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall a) provide updated plan sets showing the emergency access along the Mobile gas station property line to the north; b) provide updated plan sets showing the design of the right-in, right-out access; c) address the peer engineer review comments in the Woodard and Co. memo dated 8/25/22; d) address the peer traffic engineer review comments in the Traffic Solutions memo dated 9/16/22; e) provide downstream drainage infrastructure on plans for the connection to the catch basin. This is detailed in the 9/19/22 staff memo; f) provide formal approvals from the Portland Water District and Scarborough Sanitary District; g) pay the traffic impact fees total $64,696.69. Hygus Parkway at US Route 1, $15,840; Dunston Corner, $33,648; Oak Hill, $10,570; Payne Road Zone 1, $448.29; Payne Road Zone 2, $1,169.68; Payne Road Zone 3, $1,996.20; Payne Road Zone 5, $1,024.52; H. The applicant shall execute and record a stormwater maintenance agreement with the town. The form of the stormwater maintenance agreement is located in Appendix 1, the Town of Scarborough's Chapter 419 Post-Construction Stormwater Infrastructure Management Ordinance. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. 2. Prior to the issuance of a sign permit, the applicant will provide a final signage plan. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. 3. Prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the Planning Department. All plan modifications are to be completed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. 4. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit evidence in the form of a letter or plan prepared and stamped by a professional engineer who either prepared the post-construction stormwater management plan and its associated facilities, or supervised the plan and facilities' construction and implementation. The letter or plan shall certify that the stormwater management facilities have been installed in accordance with the approved post-construction stormwater management plan, and that they will function as intended by said plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jen Lad? Will you please call the roll?
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Rick Meinke?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Lad?
Yes.
And Rick Dupree?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the plan is passed. Thank you. Number 11, NextGen Development LLC requests a site plan amendment review to construct a 9,900 square foot, two-story mixed-use building on Lot 35 in the Innovation District of the Downs. The property is further identified as Assessas Map U-53, Lot 35. Eric?
Thank you. So NextGen is in front of the planning board with a site plan for construction of a 9,900 square foot mixed-use building. This property is located at the end of Innovation Way at the Innovation District in the Downs, directly adjacent to the IDEX lot that was approved in November or December of last year. The project would include industrial and warehouse incubator-type spaces as well as 22 apartment units on the second floor. As presented, the residential units would be accessed from the front side of the building with the commercial uses being accessed from the rear and the private drive. The property previously received site plan approval in December for a 10,000-square-foot office and light industrial space, which is no longer being pursued. Staff's main comments revolve around the access to the site and the circulation through it, including delineation of the residential versus commercial spaces. And with that, I turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Nancy St. Clair. I'm with St. Clair Associates. I'm here tonight on behalf of NextGen Development LLC. They are the new lot owners. As Eric had indicated back at the end of last year, there was a building that was approved on this site. It was a 10,000-square-foot two-story building. If you recall, that building had sort of an upscale office that was two stories on the south end of the building, and then the north end of the building was a warehouse-type area for file storage associated with the office space. And as Eric mentioned, that project is not moving forward. The applicant, the prior applicant opted not to move forward with the site. So we are here tonight before you with a new building on this property. It is technically an amended site plan because it was approved by you folks back last year, and for Mr. Duperry, which I know he was concerned on one of our other prior projects, I've also brought for you a rendering of the So for those of you who are on the board at the time of the prior approval, one of the topics that was under great discussion was timing in life is everything. We were before you folks for site plan approval, but at the same time, IDEX was coming forward, but they were at sketch plan review. So there was quite a bit of question about the points of access for IDEX for their site, as well as the orientation of the points of access for the cul-de-sac, which is now the end of Innovation Way. As part of our prior review, we worked with you folks and with the folks at IDEX to make sure that our point of access to that site was aligned directly opposite the westerly point of access to the IDEX site. That remains. When IDEX came through and actually got approved and is now going forward with construction, that entrance did not move. As part of our design of this particular site, we wanted to make sure that we had the current and most up-to-date information, so we reached out to IDEX's engineer and was able to get the final approved plans from you folks that are going to construction on that. So the entrance location remains directly aligned opposite the westerly entrance to the IDEX site. If you look closely at the site plan that is before you, you'll see the cul-de-sac for Innovation Way. That represents the most recently designed cul-de-sac and approved by the board, as well as the point of access for one of the, what would be the most southerly entrance to the IDEX site off of that cul-de-sac. So vehicles coming in, come through the cul-de-sac and pass over a short section of the private way that is located to the east of this site. If you recall in our prior discussions, there were discussions about using the private way as a point of access for the site. Our concern with that, having it being on the northerly end of the site, was the proximity to the cul-de-sac. And so we worked to make sure that we had a point of access. It was off Innovation Way, but it is separated from the cul-de-sac. With this building, this is a completely different use in that the first floor of the building has three spaces within it, one large and two somewhat smaller, that are envisioned for a light industrial warehouse type use where, very similar to the incubator buildings that are on the end of Dynamic Drive in the Innovation District. So the south end of this site has overhead doors that provide access to that first floor space. The north end of this building has windows on the north side of those incubator spaces, and has stair access points to the second story, which is where we are proposing 22 apartment units, 18 of which are studio apartments. These studio apartments, the range in size from 322 square feet to 326 square feet. For a point of reference, that apartment size is roughly 16 feet by 20 feet. Those are the studio apartments. There are four one-bedroom apartments, and those apartments range in size from 491 to 537 square feet. Not a lot bigger, but somewhat bigger, and those each have one bedroom. The remainder of those units are studio apartments. What we wanted to do with this site was to clearly denote the residential portion of the property versus the more commercial or industrial-type end of the site. So the parking for the residences, the access to the building, et cetera, is all situated on the northerly end of the site. We have our point of access, as I said, aligned with the westerly entrance to the IDEX site. We also have, if you'll see in the middle, there we have an outdoor gathering space, which would have a pergola over it. I'm going to show you the building orientation here. So what you're seeing in this rendering view is the north and east wall of the building. So you'll see that covered gathering area centrally located on the site. There, the door that shows in that rendered view is the door to access the stairwell to go to the second floor. As I mentioned, for architectural view purposes, we also have windows on the first floor to balance things out, but the residences are all on the second floor. On the opposite side, if you will, on the easterly side, we also have a stairwell and the mechanical room, so that's the area where all of the utilities would come into the building itself. There is one door that does access the first floor of the building as well on that easterly side of the building. So switching back to the site for a minute. So as part of Eric's introduction, he did indicate that the staff had asked us to discuss the points of access to the site and our sort of reasoning and logic behind why and how we have it laid out the way that we do. And as I mentioned, we've used the building as a demarcation point to separate the residential parking area from the area for the incubator spaces on the first floor. That allows us to have the folks who would be living in the second floor to have their access, their parking, et cetera, isolated, if you will, from the truck traffic that may be coming into the IDEX site off the private way. It also allows the traffic that would come into the south side of the site to use that private way as well. So we're not adding a point of access onto the cul-de-sac. We're using the We're using the existing one that was approved by IDEX. We are proposing to have our access to the first floor, the more commercialized, if you will, use of the building, separated and off that private way. It allows us to get a tractor-trailer truck into the site. We've provided you folks as part of our package with a vehicle-turning maneuver for truck access to the rear of the site. And as I mentioned, there are overhead doors on that side of the building, which would allow access into the spaces on that first floor. We are providing parking in accordance with the ordinance standards. That is calculated in your packet. And I believe there was one staff memo or peer-review number, I guess it was, that indicated that we are proposing slightly more than the ordinance requires with regard to parking. That plan that's circulating around, that was the prior approved plan, that was less than what the ordinance required for parking, and we asked for a waiver on that. We're not asking for a waiver on parking for this site, and the additional parking that is provided on the south end of the site is based on the tenants' needs for that use of that area. If you notice on the plan, you'll see that a portion of that parking on the southerly side is actually fenced in, and that is allowed, that is to provide for vehicular or small equipment parking in that fenced-in area. So those spaces are envisioned to be used for the business that will occupy the majority of the first-floor space. So we are asking for a couple of waivers, and those were highlighted in the memoranda that we received or we submitted to you folks. One is on the drive aisle width, and that is both in the north and the south side. On the north side, we are proposing to have a 22-foot drive aisle in the parking area. And on the south side of the building, we're proposing a 24-foot drive aisle. That's where the larger vehicles would be maneuvering in and out of the site. We had received a couple of comments with regard to the fire department and wayfinding and making sure that folks who were in the residential portion of the property knew that that was their area. So we're looking to do perhaps some residential-scale demarcation signage. We had noted that generally in our application materials, but that could be done with some pillars or other types of signage information at the entry off of Innovation Way, which clearly denotes that that's for the residential use. And with directional signage to direct any folks who would be coming to the first floor of the building to continue around to the south side of the site. The fire department also had made a suggestion that on the northeast corner of the site, the parking for the residential comes fairly close to the sidewalk that is along the private way. And one of the things that they had suggested was to put in an emergency gate in that location and actually allow fire department equipment to exit the site in that location. And we certainly would be open to that notion. We are not proposing that as a full means of access for residents to use, but in an emergency situation or post-emergency situation, if you will, it would allow the truck to exit and go out via the cul-de-sac. So we're certainly open to that. We have proposed two dumpsters on the site, one of which is in the fenced-in area and would be for the first floor of the building for the more commercial space. And we also have a dumpster for the residences, which is on the easterly side of the site. It has an apron and an access off the private way. That dumpster area is proposed to be screened with the typical screening that's been used in other dumpsters in the Innovation District. Certainly recognizing that it's perhaps in a more visible location, one of the alternatives that we would be proposing for that was to use a more of a solid material that is the same type of material used as the accent panels on the building. So it ties in with the building. It gives it more of a look rather than sort of a fenced-in dumpster area off to the side. So we certainly would be willing to do that as well, to update that. So I think I've sort of hit my notes, if you will. I do appreciate the opportunity to meet with you folks. We would like to have the opportunity to address the staff comments, and we'd be certainly hopeful that you folks would be comfortable enough to provide us an approval condition on doing just that. So we're here tonight to answer any questions. We do appreciate your feedback, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. This is subject to public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on this project? Is there anyone online, Eric?
No one online, Madam Chair.
In that case, the time for public comment is over. And I turn this over to the board. Let me start at this end with Rick Meinke.
Yeah, just looking at the metrics here. One of the concerns I have is that dumpster that you enter there coming off of the private drive, actually that is completely dark all the time. So you might want to add some lighting in that area. Also, on your plans, I see snow storage for the commercial side, but on the residential lot, I don't see snow storage or being considered as that.
If I can respond to that one, you're correct. We didn't show that on there. In working with Keith Smith, our landscape architect, who is here, and I apologize because I had intended to have Keith talk, but I skipped right over that with my apologies. But one of the things that we just mentioned is the plantings along the north edge of the site have been designed by Keith in order to allow for winter storage. So they're more of the perennials, they're more of the hardy plantings that would allow to be used for snow storage in the winter. When they die back, the snow banks, if you will, provide that extra screening during the winter months. So that will be the area that is identified on the plan for snow storage.
And I don't believe we allow chain-link fences around dumpsters, do we? So we'll have to come back to something a little bit different.
As I mentioned in the sort of the introduction, one of the things that we'd be proposing for that dumpster in particular is to integrate a panel similar to what's an accent panel on the building itself to actually do a full screen. Yes, and that needs to be updated as part of that.
I'll stop there, then.
Thank you. Jen?
I My first question is about whether or not there's any opportunity or whether or not your team has had conversations previously about the opportunity for any sort of shared-use parking here. So typically a residential use and any sort of daytime, commercial use, unless, of course, your tenant is a night-heavy business. But in general, those can often be compatible, compatible uses, and maybe not one-for-one, but, you know, a portion. So I'm curious about whether or not that's an opportunity. And then if it is, I think that could help alleviate, I mean, it's just a super tight site as it's been designed, right out to the full property lines on all four corners for grading and landscaping and dumpsters and all the things that you're trying to fit in here. But if there were any opportunity to make better use of those parking, shared-use parking areas, I just, it looks, I could see the northerly parking lot being very full and busy overnight and the other one being somewhat empty, and then during the day, you know, maybe the reverse to a certain extent. That was my first thought about parking. And similarly, I think it was mentioned in a staff comment or peer-review or something, but I saw that the truck-turning exhibits for fire truck and tractor-trailer.
And what happened was, in order to provide that loop and allow maneuvering to have the truck access to the first floor of the building, we ended up in a site that wouldn't meet the applicant's needs for parking for their use on the first floor as well as parking needs for the second floor because it ends up taking up quite an arc. We then looked at the alternative. Okay, let's just turn at 90, have parking on either side of the building, very similar to what we have, but a 90-degree orientation. It's a square lot, right? So what happens is we can maintain that point of access on Innovation Way for the residential and come down, very similar to what you saw on the plan that was approved last year. What happens is we can't get a truck to do basically what would be a complete turn, almost like a U, coming into the site because they can't come in off another point off Innovation Way. We can't make that maneuver. So from an orientation standpoint and all the needs that we have to meet for the types of combined uses that are on this site, this represented the best alternative. We felt that the building itself provided a good separation. We were able to clearly identify the residential points of access and the residential parking are on the north side of the site. On the south side of the site, we're able to keep those trucks down there. They can maneuver in and out and get into the more commercial, light, industrial-type portion of the site. So we did look at the other alternatives. It's not to say that we didn't, but this represented the best alternative to meet the needs of the applicant.
The crossroads requires that the building in a front lot have a relationship to the street. By putting two rows of parking in front of the building for the residents, you've essentially removed that relationship to the street.
We have, if you look at the guiding, regulating plan for the Innovation District, we do have parking cited in accordance with what would be a Type A front lot, in that there is an allowance to have parking between the street and the building. On our particular site, that's similar to AV Technic, and Throttle also has that type of a layout. The difference that the AV Technic site and the Throttle site have is that they are on a private way in which you can get access to the site. In this case, we have the cul-de-sac that's right on the corner, and there is no private way on the easterly, westerly side of the site. So we can't come in with that access through the private way because there isn't one on the west side of the site. On the east side of the site, that cul-de-sac coming through, we're not going to be able to have a point of access to this site close to that cul-de-sac. So it forces everything to be able to come in on the southerly end of the site off the private way. And when we do that, then we mix in the residential parking, the commercial parking, and we've looked at different alternatives to try to figure out, well, can you mix them? And what happens is you never get a good separation between the folks who will be living there and wanting to walk to the stairs on either end of the building and the overhead doors that are accessing the first-floor spaces. So we felt that this orientation represented that, provided a front lot determination. We are extending the presence of the building with the gathering area for the site to bring that a little bit closer to the site. We have a robust landscape plan along the site frontage in that 10-foot green strip, and we feel that given this particular site's location, we are consistent with that regulating plan for the Innovation District.
It's one row of parking. You're comparing it to one row of parking.
Angela, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for coming, by the way.
I believe there's parking right in front of the building and then another. Is there not two rows?
It's a double-loaded layout.
Yeah, so we have essentially two rows.
Which is, this is the regulating plan image that I was referring to.
Yeah, I understand. The board needs to make a judgment as to whether that regulating plan has been met with what you are proposing here. I'm not clear that it has been. The, in terms of a chain-link fence, chain-link fences are allowed, but they must be either painted black or be covered with vinyl.
I believe it's a black vinyl-coated fence.
All right, so that does have that coating. Do you have arrangements for a knock box, knocks box across where that gate is?
There would be one with that gate, yes.
Okay. I'm not clear where the area is that's, did you indicate that there's an area covered?
The outdoor gathering area has a pergola over it. It's part of the building.
No, I'm sorry, on the commercial part. Or is it just that, is it just enclosed? There's no covering?
It's fenced in, there's no covering.
Okay. I get concerned when, when I hear the, well, we've got this lot and we've got this building and we have to make it all fit. And we've seen that in the past and we're seeing it again. I understand that the applicant has needs and wants to try and get everything done in the space that's allotted. But this development, this building troubles me in terms of how it chops the whole lot in half. It really doesn't allow for circulation around it. It has the, I don't believe it has the relationship with the street that's necessary. And it's troubling to me, and I'm really struggling to see how it meets the ordinances and the requirements, design requirements for the Downs. The 22 feet, that's not something we reasonably do. We traditionally do. It is, and as I said, it's non precedential. I, I keep feeling as though what we're seeing is something that's being squeezed in. And the building is attractive. I like the concept of a mixed use. I'm sure that within a week of the apartments being built, they're going to be filled with people who want to work at IDEX or visit IDEX or rented by IDEX to have them available for workers that have to come in for some specific jobs. But it, again, it troubles me. It's too big a building. It's crammed. The parking, I don't think, is effective, and I don't think, once you eliminate, once you go back up to 24 feet, you're going to have a problem there, or 25 feet. So I don't know what advice to give you other than to say I, I have problems trying to fit, to fit this building on this lot. So is there anything else you would like to know from us?
Like to be able to have, I think, a little bit more definitive direction. I've heard a lot of positive comments about the project. We were hoping to be able to leave here tonight with clear direction on, you know, what we need to do to address the plan, and I understand your concerns, Madam Chair, but, you know, we do have the ability to demonstrate that a vehicle can maneuver in and out of those parking spaces with a 22-foot drive aisle as requested. We also have a trailer truck coming in and out with a 24-foot drive aisle as requested. I know tonight there was a discussion about a similar residential setting in which there was parking on either side of the residential drive aisle that was approved at 20 feet. And so I understand totally about precedent setting, but I'm asking the And so I understand totally about precedent setting, but I'm asking the board to consider the fact that we can demonstrate via vehicle-turning maneuvers that a 22-foot drive aisle in this particular setting can work.
Madam Chair, I'm concerned with emergency vehicle. How's that going to work?
Part of the application materials that we provided to you showed the maneuvering of a fire truck into the north end of the site. The discussion about providing a gated access for vehicles leaving the site is, as a result of the discussion and review with the fire department, that they like to have a gate on the easterly end of the site for them to leave. But there is a vehicle-turning maneuver for the town's fire truck to come into the site. It's in the application materials. That's the reasoning for the request for a waiver on the drive entry with, to 25 feet at the entrance to the site.
Can you point me to the design that shows the exit, the emergency exit, or the exit for the emergency vehicle?
The exit for the emergency vehicle is a request that came to us in a staff memo. It's not on the plans, but we would provide it. So if you look at the northeast corner of the site, you'll see that the turn area for the parking is relatively close to the sidewalk. We would put a gate in that location. We would break that pavement and put ramps in for the sidewalk. It would be flushed, and there would be a gate in that location. So a fire truck that came into the site could just go out the exit gate, but not residential vehicles.
So that would be a third cut?
It's a gated access, emergency only.
Third, but a third cut.
It is.
Rick, do you have additional questions?
No, I'm just, I did find the print, but I still don't understand. You're saying that you're going to have a gate on the east end of this? I guess I needed to see it on a print.
So a fire truck would come into the site from Innovation Way. That would be the only way a fire truck could get to this site because Innovation Way is a dead end. So the fire truck would enter the site on the west side of the site, come into the northerly parking area, and then the fire department had concerns about their ease of being able to back out after the emergency and leave the site. So what they had requested was, if you look at the east end towards the private way, you'll see that there's a back around for the parking, and it gets fairly close to the sidewalk. In that location, we would connect to the private way with a gate that is locked and controlled only by the fire department to provide an opportunity for a fire truck to exit the site after the emergency.
Okay. I just didn't see it on print that way.
And how does the fire truck exit from the back parking lot? I guess that's the south.
On the south end, the fire truck can back into the area that is extended on the private way, down by where those five parking spaces are, and then drive straight out.
So it's backing out?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let me ask the staff if they have any recommendations and guidance to provide the applicant for their resubmission.
Can I just ask a quick question first?
Sure.
On the fire truck, because I was a little confused, as Rick was. So, I think I understand it now that you've explained it. Doesn't the fire truck movement have to be approved at some point by Public Safety, by the fire department, right?
Yeah, they generally review the turning movements that the applicants provide.
Okay. So at some point, the applicant's gone over how they proposed that it works, and at some point, the fire department will look at that, and if it's not okay, they would let us know, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And they were actually the ones who, as several of you have mentioned, have requested the eastern end of the parking lot to connect to that private drive as a gated access so that they could get to and through the site.
Yeah, I know we were discussing it, and we discuss a lot of things, and it's all important, but I just wanted to make sure that the fire department is the one who actually makes the decision on...
So to my understanding...
...determines whether the truck can move.
As part of that review, as part of the staff review that generates the memoranda, the fire department is involved. So they have looked at these plans. They've seen the truck maneuvering for the emergency vehicles for the site, and as a result of their review of that information, their one request was to have that connection. There were no comments that we received on the access at the southerly end of the site.
Okay. So the fire department's reviewed it. The one request they made, you accommodated, correct?
We will, yes, yes.
And so the fire department is okay with the movement through this site as it is?
To my understanding, yes.
As it is. So, the fire department looked at it. They had one concern. You addressed the concern, and now the fire department's okay with what you proposed. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
And as a general rule of thumb, what we see the fire department asking for, and I don't think I'm giving away any firefighting secrets with this, but access to a short side and a long side of the building. And I think the Innovation Drive access provides the support to the front side of the building, and then the private way allows them to get to the side of the building. So I think that was sort of where they were comfortable with what was provided, especially if the connection's made so a fire truck can get in and out from Innovation Way.
But not to the fourth side of the building?
Right, and we can certainly check in with them on that again, but that's something we can update the board on.
Since there's no access for a car to go or a truck to go completely around the building, they have to go back out onto a road, up another road, and back into another parking lot. So the Innovation Way, the private way, access works for the side, one side of the building, but not for the other side. And with residents, since it's residential, fire safety certainly needs to be handled. And Rick, the, let's see, Sheet 1, turn simulation.
Yeah, I got it now. I see it.
Yep, there it is.
So, Madam Chair, to your earlier question, I'll go first, and then I'm sure everybody else has comments as well. I think that the point that you brought up about the orientation to the street or the relationship with the street, to me, this is a, I understand the intent, but it's somewhat of a back lot in Innovation Way, and the project itself, the architecture, the usage, I think, is a good use for this lot. You know, this is the second time they've come to us with a project for this lot. I mean, the first one we approved unfortunately didn't go. If this one doesn't go, and now the Downs and Scarborough have to look for another tenant, and I know it's not town of Scarborough, but we all benefit when we have a good neighbor. I'm okay with the project and the waivers as it is. And as far as the relationship with the street, I know that, again, I understand the intent, but I think it's a good project, and I would be willing to allow it even if it doesn't orient the street as well as maybe some of the other projects have.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I think that, well, first of all, one of your comments about rationale for orienting the building in this direction, I thought, had to do with not, with better functionality for emergency vehicles to come in and enter the site, so not coming in and dead-ending, even though it kind of sounds like that. I think what I'm understanding is that's what the current, that's what the current plan is prior to the comment about the gated access. So I guess I'm, I'm still not entirely sure why a building orientation in the other direction might not work, but that's an aside. The question was about the street-facing orientation of this building, and I think that there are perhaps a couple of other things that you might be able to consider to improve upon how the building in this location interfaces with the street. So things like, you've got this actually tremendous outdoor gathering space for residents of the building, but there's no connection to that, or from that, to the sidewalk infrastructure on Innovation Way, or I say there isn't. You could go a very circuitous route out along the private way, but it just, it seems like you could really present the front door of this building to the edge of Innovation Way with maybe some additional landscaping, or a crosswalk, or some benches, or something like that, on the northern side of this parking lot that would kind of create more of a human-scale entrance as opposed to just the vehicular entrance that you have currently shown. I'm not sure if I'm doing a good job explaining that, but that, to me, is one way that, you know, you could kind of tie this building in its current location, preserve the parking in its, as it's shown, but also have a stronger presence to the edge of the street in a way that maybe is a nod to the design guidelines here. That was your question. That's my comment.
Yeah, if I could follow up on what Jen said, it's possible to, that enhancing the doors to the upstairs, perhaps double doors on both ends, and the striping or some sort of passageway to the road, might create a much better orientation to the street, might be much more welcoming. Right now, as you look at it, while the access for the apartments faces Innovation Way, when you look at it, there's very little indication that there are apartments there at all, that there's anything welcoming, that the outside pergola that you've set up and with the canopy could as well be for the employees of the first floor, you know, as for the apartments. In other words, it's not a coherence that's there.
So we can work with the architect to perhaps enhance the residential points of access to the building, and then perhaps provide through a crosswalk, a connector directly to the sidewalk along Innovation Way, and maybe some benches that would flank that in that green strip between the parking and the...
And that brings the building to the road?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a good way to go. Anyone else? Any other comments? You got a good sense of where we're going?
I do. One last question. Is there something that we could work with staff on to be able to finalize it and perhaps get on a consent calendar with you folks, so you'd still have the opportunity if there was something that you had a concern about, but at least we would be able to afford? The applicant is concerned about winter construction setting in and getting a foundation in before the snow flies.
I'm trying to think of a parliamentary way to do it. Certainly, we recommend that you work with the staff, and...
Madam Chair, I see.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to do it appropriately.
I earlier said I was okay with it, but if it's going to change, I want to see it again. I don't want to drive by there and see something like, "What the heck?"
Okay, that's very helpful, Rick. Basically, you're coming back to us again. Work with the staff, come back to us with something that I think you've got a sense of what would make all of us comfortable, and it wouldn't have to be a consent agreement, but it could be, it's possible that working with the staff would bring this to completion for the next meeting, but not for a consent, because I think we do need to take a look at it.
Very well.
So if you can move fast, then you can get early on the agenda. And I believe that's the October 11th meeting, and if it's any consolation to you, I will not be here. So, but neither will Rick Mynking, so just so you know. All right, thank you. Nancy, I really appreciate how you work with us.
Appreciate it.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be back.
Staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All we had today, we did want to ask if you all would consider, or wanted to consider, moving your October 31st meeting to November 1st. October 31st, of course, is Halloween, and I'm not sure how many of you that affects, but it was a request that was brought up by some applicants, and so we thought we'd push it forward.
I'm already aware of a couple of people who are planning on taking their kids out for Halloween and would have to come in costume, so I have no problem. Anybody else got a problem moving it to a Tuesday?
I would prefer to move it to a Tuesday. I don't want to be here on Halloween. I've got grandkids, so.
You would get your costume on. I could come in costume.
Okay, it is a non-costume meeting on November 1st.
On November 1st, thank you. And then, the only other thing we wanted to mention, we are working on the New Year's calendars, and so we'll bring those back November 21st for y'all for next year.
Thank you.
Before we finish on the staff report, I just wanted to take a quick poll, just to make sure, for Wednesday, that we'll have a quorum. As you folks probably know, the Town Council's holding a joint hearing with the Planning Board on two contract zone proposals, so is there anybody who cannot make that at 5:30 on Wednesday?
I'm not 100%... It's at 5:30, right?
Yep.
So, I'm not 100% sure that I can make it because I'm somewhat of a, not on-call, but, you know, if the lights go out here, I won't be here because I'll be trying to get your lights back on, so.
If the lights go out here, we will not be here either.
We've got like a $20,000, $40,000 generator over here. $20,000, $40,000.
Okay, let me ask, Chad, are you going to be able to be here?
No, I have a conflict of interest and is well traveling.
Okay. We only need four board members, 1, 2, 3, 4?
I'll be here Wednesday.
I'll be here Wednesday? Roger, Jen?
So we'll have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a question? The next meeting, are you guys going to go through the whole week, or...
Yeah, congratulations. You get to run the next meeting.
He's going to wait a week to tell you.
Yeah, I was going to wait, but, you know, it came up. Administrative amendment report.
None at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Minor development reviews.
We have a few in the pipeline, but none at this moment.
Thank you. Correspondence. We received the letter from Andrew Mackey from the Scarborough Land Trust requesting that the recreational fee be directed to the Scarborough Land Trust. To the best of my knowledge, we cannot do that. That is not within our authority to do. About the only thing we can do with a recreational fee is if a developer shows us that the developer has enough amenities and recreation on the site, the developer can ask to be, for a waiver of the fee. I recall that happening a couple of times, and I actually don't recall that we actually waived the fee. This is money that belongs to the town of Scarborough. It goes into a budget. We have no say over, we can't sequester any part of a budget for the town, and we cannot direct any of a town's money to a private organization. As wonderful as the Land Trust is, this... As wonderful as the land trust is, this, it's not in our purview.
Thank you.
Unless somebody wants to argue with me.
I ain't arguing.
So Erica Autumn, could you please send a note to Andrew that we've had this discussion? We don't believe it's something that's within our authority to do.
Certainly, thank you.
Planning board comments. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I've heard that. All in favor? Just raise your hands, wave a little bit. Thank you. We're adjourned.